No problem. I, I understand. I, I'm talking tech- the technical aspect to get it done.
Sure.
Always street meetings.
Okay, where, I know, but so that the applicant or the opposing person could talk. Uh, it's six o'clock, we're live. And, uh, Ally, as soon as you're ready.
Why am I on twice? Do I get two votes?
I, I hear an echo.
I only see you on once.
Yep.
I'm muting phone number eight three. Is that Dave Garfield?
Yes, it is.
All right, hold on. No, it's not. I just heard, oh, he unmuted himself. Um, I don't see Kristen or Jillian, but if they show up, I will give them rights to mute.
Okay, hold on. Let's make sure we have.
Going to do that? Can you give me rights to mute?
Yes, I can.
Okay, uh, Jakey Meyer, are you there? Mr. Meyer, are you there? Okay, and Mr. Flansbrough, are you there? I don't see your picture.
Sorry, yes, I'm here, Chairman.
Okay. Your cameras don't work in just.
Ally, did you get me right?
What are you, how can you try to put the camera for Chairman?
So, would I, excuse me?
The last virtual meeting, I want to see you on camera.
I, I'll, I'll see you soon enough. Okay, maybe I'll put on my camera.
One second, Ally. So I just have to look at the squares and if they light up, I just have to click on them and hit the mute, right?
Yeah, it generally just means that whoever's talking is coming out of the wrong person's speaker.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Ally, I would like to start the meeting. Let's just confirm that we have the quorum. You have me, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Renner. I think, uh, Mr. Garfield's on, and Mr. Meyer's on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I will call the meeting to a halt. Let's try to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, free, justous. Thank you. Ally, can you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the Township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Here.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Sable. Mr. Flansbrough.
Here.
Mr. Hertzel.
Ally, this is.
John's doing that because I can't see everybody while I'm doing this.
What am I doing?
Muting that echo.
I'm, I'm muted, so I don't see how I'm.
It's not, it's not you echoing. I thought you said you were going to mute the people who were echoing.
Okay, I got you. I'll look.
Mr. Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Ritzick. Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Ackerman. And I do believe Mr. Ritzick is coming. He just let us know he would be about a half an hour late.
Okay, swearing of professionals, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Both, do you swear from testimony or give me further proof of the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to resolutions.
The first resolution is SP twenty-four sixteen for six fifty James Street. Um, I believe that Mr. Flansbrough, and that's it out of who's here, cannot vote on that. He wasn't here when we approved it.
Hey, do we have a motion to approve the first resolution?
Move.
Move on Mr. Meyer. I'll second it. All in favor, aye.
The next one is SP twenty-four twenty-one for Base Shane Dell. It's a major site plan for a school. Um, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Renner cannot vote on that.
Do we have a move? All seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, on to public hearing. Ally, is there any changes to the published agenda?
Yes, the application, SD twenty-four seventy by Joseph Bitten. Um, this is rehearing of an application and we do not have a quorum of the members who were at the meeting at which this application was denied. So we are recommending that it be carried without further notice. My recommendation would be the August third public hearing, um, in the two thirty-one third Street courtroom.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, can you make, uh, the announcement?
I, I can, um, bear with me, I have to get the agenda. Bear with me, things are overlapping here.
Levy Isaacson.
Hi, Levy, how are you?
Hi, Levy.
Ally, can you do it? I have to, uh, I have my screens all, uh, over the place because I'm trying to do the, uh, the muting. I can't keep up my agenda.
This, this application sent notice for a virtual meeting and the August third meeting will be in person, so I don't know. Can we just make that announcement or do we need? I'll just do it. Uh, members of the public be advised that application SD twenty-four seventy made by Joseph Bitten is being tabled and carried to the August third, twenty twenty-one meeting, which will be six P M. In the courtroom meeting hall at two thirty-one third Street in Lakewood with no further notice to be provided.
Well, I, now that's a to be, it may be required to have new notice. We'll have to look at that. If their notice said that it was a virtual meeting format, we change. They, they might have to renotice, but we'll evaluate that and let the public know.
Okay, uh, when does, when did it have to renotice? Do we have time? They have plenty of time for August to, you know. Okay, are there any other changes?
Like a re- a reconsideration matter, so. The, um, and, and Mr. Chairman, there's another matter on tonight. I see Mr. Jay in, in the, uh, in the gallery. And I know you and I had a discussion about this just, uh, an hour ago or so, about, uh, how you were going to proceed with that matter tonight. Because Mr. Hirsch sent a letter indicating, uh, that he's someone to proceed, that he has matters that he has to work out. I think that's the thing that wants to go forward. So we're, I, you know, I recommend that we address that at the outset of the meeting so people won't have to wait until the end of the meeting before the end of the.
I, I'm not able to hear anything that John's saying.
He was muffled, I think. Just make sure you're facing the computer, John.
Okay, Ally, is Mr. Hirsch on?
No, per your direction, I have his cell phone number so I can text him when we start that application.
Okay, but, uh, I think it, uh, if we could call him now, if he can call in, we can decide if we'll listen to it tonight or not. And if not, we, we can table it.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes, Terry.
Yeah, just want to point out, we received a schematic revised circulation design from the engineer Glenn this afternoon. So I just want to make the board aware, uh, assuming the application is heard tonight, Glenn will be presenting that and giving testimony at, as an exhibit.
Uh, was that, uh, did your office review it?
We have not had the opportunity.
Okay.
Just received this afternoon.
Did Mr. Hirsch review it, the opposing attorney?
I, I don't know.
I might, Robert Shea on behalf of the applicant, uh, we, uh, we provided Mr. Hirsch and also Mr. Dean.
Hi, Ally, it's Hector.
Who I see is on the, uh, on the screen as well. So they did receive it this afternoon.
Mr. Dean is your engineer?
No, Mr. Dean is the, uh, traffic engineer for the, uh, objector. And, uh, it was a meeting, there was a discussion last week, and Mr. Dean had rendered certain recommendations and those recommendations, very frankly, were incorporated into the application or into the plan that was prepared by, uh, by Mr. Lyons. So, uh, the changes that were made today were really based upon some recommendations made by Mr. Dean. They were, they were something that, uh, we were attempting to do to try to resolve concerns and the issues that, uh, uh, that Mr. Dean and Mr. Hirsch had. So they, they were not as a result of something that the applicant, very frankly, thought they needed, but in a hopes of trying to resolve the issue just as, as, as we would do it and as the board has done it many times at the, uh, at, at the hearing itself. Uh, these changes were made really at the behest of the, uh.
Okay, my only question is, if, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, the opposing attorney is satisfied with it. Ally, did you reach him?
Yes, he said he's gonna call in, but he also said the board has his letter that he sent in outlining his position that is available on the public drive, and I can certainly share that here if you'd like to see it again.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, maybe we should just hear the township's, um, applications. We could get them home.
Okay.
They probably are.
The only thing, Mr. Renner, if we're tabling number four, I would like to do in the onset of the, not everybody has to wait around. But I don't mind until Mr. Hirsch calls that we do do the township, uh, number one.
Okay, so this is SP twenty-four thirty-five made by the Township of Lakewood. It's a site plan for a new facility um, over near the Public Works building. I will pull up the review letter for you.
Okay, Ally, I think Hector is, uh, logged on, he's on.
Chime table joined as well.
Okay, so we have a full board. Sir, and Levy Isaacson.
Am I on?
When we get Ackerman to join, then we have a full board.
Yes, we hear you, Fuentes, you're here.
Okay, uh, Terry, would you like to go through the report?
Yeah, the, this is a, a courtesy review, Chairman, so it's not a conventional review. We don't have varies as or submission waivers or, or anything of that nature. There's no bulk variance relief necessary for the project as currently proposed. Um, I'll summarize the, the bottom paragraph on, on page one. Uh, Lakewood Township has requested the courtesy review of an inspection building on a parcel fronting American Avenue west of its intersection with New Hampshire Avenue. As illustrated on the site plans, uh, and architectural floor plan and referenced in the stormwater report. Uh, the building will be approximately eight thousand one hundred and ten square feet in size. One-story prefabricated office, uh, parking lot with fifty-six parking spaces is proposed. Uh, the facility will utilize existing stormwater management and other infrastructure within the Township's Department of Public Works complex. And two-way site access is proposed from America Avenue as indicated on the plans.
Okay. There, there are no variances, no nothing.
That is correct.
Okay.
The parking is approximately a ratio of approximately seven spaces, uh, per one thousand square feet. Uh, and this is non-medical office.
What, what are they using the building for, Mr. Tony?
We're going to be housing the inspection department and the.
Hold on one second. Mr. Jackson, does Tony have to be sworn in?
There's, really, on the outside, and yes, um, because he's providing testimony.
Yeah, I'll present him, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Okay.
If, if I may, Harold Hensel of the firm, C K Hensel, Tom's over, we're the township attorneys. I have with me this evening, uh, Tony Arecki and Glenn Land Lines. We would ask to be recognized as a professional engineer and professional expert that, uh, drafted the site plan that's before the board for, as, as, um, uh, your engineer indicated for a courtesy review. Um, if I, I, if, Tony, we can have you sworn in, please. Your camera's on, and, uh, Mr. Lyons, we will subsequently swear you, your camera will be, need to be on as well. We can quickly explain what the, what the, the building is for.
Please raise your right hands. Do you both swear from testimony or give me further proof of the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Tony, um, you've seen, um, um, Terry Vogts' report. Can you address number one, which is an explanation of what the building is for? I know it's for the, in, the inspection department and the construction department, but if you could, uh, outline what the purpose of the building is for. Um, um, Terry's kind of, uh, explained what, what, what the structure is. It's on Drexel and, I guess, America Avenue, but if he could, explain it to the board, please.
We're looking to expand, uh, space at the municipal building for employees there and to, uh, expand space in the parking lot at two thirty-one third Street. So by, uh, developing this project, this building, we can move the thirty-plus employees from the inspection and engineering department over to here, Public Works, freeing up approximately forty parking spaces at the municipal building. And then utilizing the existing, uh, inspection building to move some township offices over to free up more space in the municipal building.
Okay, where we have more parking?
Yes.
Where, where do you have forty more parking spaces? You're not throwing down the old inspection building?
No, no, but we, we're removing the vehicles that would be there, the inspectors, engineering personnel, clerical personnel that park there now.
Okay, and, and fifty-six parking spaces enough for inspection department? But all, all, all the builders coming, it's the pickup inspections or?
Yes, uh, I, I, I'm actually based out of the inspection department, so I have a good feel of what's happening there day, day in, day out. And this is, uh, with, the amount of parking spaces we'll have in a new facility is way more than we'll ever use.
Okay, so right now I'm, we're, we're double parking all over the parking lot.
Correct, so this should help free that up.
Okay, I thought that you said you had thirty employees, I thought maybe you need more than, okay, twenty-six for the public. Uh, any, anything else you would like to?
It, it, just, Tony, the, the estimated time of construction and the operating hours, those are the other things that, um, Terry asked about. How long is it going to take for that building to go up?
Uh, well, I think Glenn can answer a timeline or, uh, what I would think within the year. Uh, it's, it's a simple structure, just, and it's laid out as you can see from the plans, it's pretty much open. Uh, our hours of operation are typically eight to four thirty, five o'clock. There's no second shift. Uh, there's nothing early in the morning. Uh, the only in and out would be the township-owned vehicles and employees picking them up or leaving with them. And then, uh, there's just two periods of busy, uh, times for, uh, contractors and residents coming in is usually first thing in the morning, approximately eight thirty, nine o'clock. By nine thirty, they're gone. The inspectors are gone by nine thirty, and then again, from that two thirty to four thirty time, uh, we get a little bit of travel. Building's pretty much empty. There's only the, uh, minimal inspectors and office, office staff.
Tony, what's with the Plinwood and Zoneywood? Where are they going? I understand.
Hey, there's always a future, right?
You still have more room over there?
We can always make room.
Okay, uh, if you want to swear in, Mr. Lyons, and he was sworn in, if he has anything to add to it.
Best sworn.
He's sworn already?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Glenn, if you, if you could, e- e- explain the, uh, there, there've been some questions obviously from the chair about the, uh, number of parking spaces for the building. Can you, can you address the building? Explain what it's going to look like and, uh, the calculation for parking? If you can unmute, probably, Glenn. I'm assuming you might be muted.
I was muted, sorry. Um, it's a, uh, base, a prefabricated metal building. Uh, so the construction of that, uh, as far as the slab and the exterior is probably two to three months at the most, and then the rest is just, uh, the interior, uh, which probably take another uh, two, probably another three months. Uh, the parking lot is, uh, fifty, fifty-six spaces. Uh, if this were regular office use, um, we would have, we would have forty spaces required. So, um, as Tony said, they have about forty, uh, inspectors and people who are going to be there. Um, stormwater management's being provided, public utilities, you know, water sewer. Uh, currently, this is a, um, somewhat vacant lot. They've been using it for, um, you know, materials, you know, storage of materials like gravel and stone, that, that type of thing, and, uh, so that'll be that, that use will go somewhere else on the Public Works yard. Um, it's, it's right in off Cedar Bridge. It will be the first driveway on the left and, uh, backs up to uh, actually only backs up to one residential house and, uh, cold set.
Okay. Now, the, the, in, in. Yeah, in, in Terry's letter, he indicates there was no lighting information provided. Is there lighting being provided, and we know the hours are not only going to be during the daytime?
Yes, we, we'll have some lighting, but, uh, as Tony said, basically everybody's out there by five thirty. So we really only need a little bit of light, you know, parking lot lighting for an hour or two. Uh, even if people were to stay over, you know, stay a little late for it. So, uh, we do show lighting on the plan. We just didn't show the normal photogrametrics on it. Uh, so, uh, we will do that for, uh, for Terry's review. Um, and again, the lights will, will be on timers, so they're not on normally.
Okay, okay, and there was an indication of stormwater management. This does qualify as major development. How's stormwater being handled?
Uh, we have, uh, recharge trench, uh, or recharge that goes through the center of the site and then connects out to, uh, America Avenue and then goes down to the, the large detention basin to the north side of the Public Works garage, uh, so everything will discharge ultimately down there.
And that'll handle all the water on site, I take it?
Yep, it will handle all the water on site, and currently, whatever's on site flows downhill to Public Works and goes into that yard, uh, that detention basin. So we're really only taking care of the, the additional impervious surface.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that'd be the testimony from, this is for the township. I don't know if the chair, the board has any questions.
Yeah, I, do any board members have any questions or recommendations for this application?
I have one question, Chairman. It's Justin.
Okay, please go ahead.
What's Pizza Plus gonna do?
Deliver.
Deliver. They're losing like a lot of customers, you know?
Motion delivers, tell your friends.
That's it.
That's it, that's my only question.
Okay, so I, I, I think it's a beautiful application. And the only thing I recommend to have is mo- as much parking as possible. That's the only thing that, that I have to say. I, 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 I know the existing, the inspection department was always crazy with parking. I never could get there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, do we need a motion, Mr. Jackson, to recommend it or?
Do we, do we need to open to the public?
I don't know. Mr. Jackson, are you there?
I assume.
I'm, I'm sorry, I had my mute button on.
Do we have to open to the public? We should?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I would open to the public right now. Uh, Ally, is there anybody from the public?
I received one email from Mr. Zynas. He asked, when do they anticipate starting and finishing construction, which I believe was addressed? And he said, will the construction need to be bid out?
Uh, no, there's, there's, uh, no reason to bid out the construction. Um, there is a, uh, developer in town who is, uh, who has made arrangements with the township to, uh, build the building. Um, they were supposed to build the building to replace the, um, uh, community center, which is right there on Fourth Street by the railroad tracks. And, uh, they've made an agreement and rather than build a new community center, they're going to build this building for the township.
Okay.
John, do you want to go through the call-in users? Actually, it looks like lots of them are unmuted. And see if any of them want to speak. Yeah, they're all unmuted.
Okay, is anybody, uh, on the call-in users or from the public who would like to comment on this application? Okay, we'll close it to the public. And, uh, John, do we need a recommend, uh, a motion to recommend this to go?
Yeah.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to recommend, uh, to approve it or not approve it, to recommend it to.
Levy Isaacson.
Levy Isaacson moved. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sable, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Isaacson, I can't hear you.
Yeah, you may.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you on behalf of Lakewood Township for the, um, the recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, Ally, is Mr. Hirsch on?
He may be one of the call-in users. If Mr. Hirsch is any of the call-in users, please identify yourself.
Yes, Ally, uh, Tom Hirsch, I called in.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, uh, and Mr. Jackson, I think we should listen to what Mr. Shay says and, or Mr. Hirsch says and decide if we're listening to it or not tonight.
I agree. Um, Mr. Hirsch, what, what telephone?
I labeled him.
I see your name. I see your name, that's mine.
Got it.
Um, so, uh.
Tom J. Hirsch.
Okay, so I hear a noise, so what am I doing?
Could you mute everybody else, uh?
It was, I got it, I got it.
Okay, thank you, Ally. Okay, Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
Okay, uh.
Can you hear me?
This matter, Mr. Chairman, um, so, uh, ju- just for purposes of, uh, discussing whether we should proceed at this time.
We're not proceeding, we're not, uh, we're not listening to it right now. If we listen to it, it will be later in the, in the evening. But the question is, are we listening to it tonight at all?
Right, this is, this is just a, uh, preliminary matter to determine whether, whether it should go forward tonight, so. Hirsch wrote a letter, so I would recognize, I would recommend that you recognize Mr. Hirsch. Have him set forth that he wishes for the matter to not proceed tonight, and then Mr. Shay could respond, and then the board can make the determination.
All right. Would you like me to start, Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, for the record, I represent the Congregation Sons of Israel. Um, as indicated in my, uh, letter that we sent about the adjournment earlier this afternoon, uh, the last, well, probably over a month, uh, I've been discussing with Mr. Shay um, a resolution of certain issues my client has, uh, to the, um, the site plan, to the operation. Not so much the use, but the traffic, pedestrian safety of children and, and parents. Uh, we ultimately reached an understanding that I would have our traffic engineer, Gary Dean, prepare a report and with some suggestions on a plan, uh, and submit it to, uh, Mr. Shay so he could review it with his client, his en- his engineer for the purpose that we would then, uh, per our agreement, have it set up sometime, either a Zoom meeting or a conference call, uh, to discuss it and try to finalize it so we could perhaps have an amended plan filed with the board, not us, but the applicant. Uh, assuming we had reached agreement, and if we had, then, you know, any opposition we may have otherwise had, uh, would be withdrawn, so. Uh, we sent the plan on June fourteenth to Mr. Shay from our traffic engineer with a report, uh, explaining why certain changes were being requested, mostly dealing with traffic and pedestrian safety. And, um, we then, Mr. Shay then, uh, requested setting up a conference call on July first. So, of course, that was a Friday, and we had July fourth weekend, Monday holiday, and here we are tonight. So we had a conference call with our engineers, Mr. Shay and I, and it, I thought it went well. We seemed to be in agreement on, uh, most, not all, issues on Mr. Dean's report. And the understanding was at that point, uh, Mr. Shay's engineer would prepare a revised plan to be submitted to the board. It would be sent to us to review to make sure we were in fact all on the same page. Because there was a couple other commitments that aren't actually, wouldn't be actually shown on the plan. There would be more of a, a commitment for a condition. Um, so, that report came in, I, I didn't see it till later, early this afternoon. Mr. Dean got it at two o'clock this afternoon. He's responded indicating, thanks, it's, we're moving in the right direction, but it doesn't include everything we, we discussed. And I'm not going to get into details about it. It's just, uh, you know, there were still some things. So what I didn't understand, and I had advised Mr. Shay about earlier, um, was assuming we had agreed, you know, the plan was we, an amended plan would be submitted to the board, and obviously, that wouldn't be ten days prior to the hearings. I said, we, we need to carry this so we can get the plan in, so there's no disagreement, no arguments later on. We finally resolved this. We finally resolved this matter after all these years. And, you know, we can go from there. So I understood Mr. Shay was going to submit the plan. I said, I think it's going to be a problem with the 10 days, even if we're in agreement, and we haven't even gotten finalized the agreement. So I did have Mr. Dean submit to the board, because I didn't know where this was going tonight. The, his report and the plan that he had submitted, you know, back in June 14th to Mr. Shay and his engineer to review, in case we had to go down this road tonight. So this is further complicated, as I indicated in my letter, and I don't like to get into personal things, but my wife was ill. She had an episode of a certain disorder she had this morning at 9 o'clock, and so I've been homebound.
I wish you will.
Have my file.
No, I wish you will. I wish her.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And it's not just a sympathy thing. I just haven't had my file to prepare, and so I requested this afternoon for all the reasons above, that we don't have the final plan in front of the board. And I really wasn't prepared to argue this case from home tonight that we adjourn it, because the applicant is still conducting their business. This is not like they're waiting for an approval so they can do something. This is an ongoing childcare center. So I didn't see what the issue was in carrying it so we could work out the revised plan, hopefully. The final thing is file that with the board, Mr. Shay's, you know, it's his case, of course. And then the board engineer would have time to look at it, review it. And we'd all be on the same page, and we could, if we had reached agreement, get through this rather quickly at a subsequent meeting. So that's why I was requesting the adjournment. I thought it was best for everybody, quite frankly, and there was really no downside to the applicant. So that's where I was at, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for giving me this time.
Okay. Mr. Shay, do you want to respond to it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just again, just based upon what Mr. Hirsch had indicated. There is really no agreement per se at this point in time in writing or understanding at all. Where everybody's tried to proceed with good faith to attempt to alleviate some of these issues, which we did. We received a report from Mr. Dean. Some things we thought was a good idea, somewhat consistent with some of the recommendations by Mr. Vogt. As a result of the conversation we had on Friday, I indicated to Mr. Hirsch that we're going to attempt to try to get a set of plans over to him over the weekend. That didn't pan out, obviously, because of the holidays. And we were able to, Mr. Lines was able to get the plan over to them this morning. I know there's an issue as to whether they received it the first time out, but we ultimately, I think everybody confirmed that they had received the the actual revised plan that Mr. Vogt has at around 1:32 o'clock. The changes that were made were changes more than likely that sometimes are made at the board, at the board hearing, where representations are made that we would change an item on the plan cosmetically, change the sidewalk here, change the sidewalk there. There was not, there were no major changes on the footprint of the preschool. There were no major, major changes as to the site itself, other than some of the recommendations taken by Mr., from Mr. Dean's report, which we've incorporated very frankly into what's before the board tonight. And I realized that we had just, Mr. Lines had just sent over to the board the information this afternoon. So, you know, we're prepared to move forward, explain what those changes are. I certainly understand Mr. Hirsch's concern. I also wish him the best with his wife. But again, we have a client to represent, and we wanted to get this application moving. And hopefully the board can hear the application, review the changes that were made. And again, they're somewhat de minimis as it relates to the overall application. The application was deemed to be site plan exempt. So you're just addressing the concerns that Mr. Vogt had placed in his June 23rd report, 2020, by the way. And also the, some of the changes that were made as a result of Mr. Dean's report. So we think incorporating all of those, everybody seems to be moving in a direction of trying to resolve this. We certainly think it would be a best for everyone to resolve, and we think the changes that were made in the most recent site plan reflect the attempt by my client to reach an amicable resolution.
Okay.
If I can respond briefly.
Sir, yes.
You know, it's an interpretation, whether they're minor. We don't think they're minor changes. We think they're extremely important safety changes, but there is no plan in terms of what we agreed to before the board. So, you know, we think that's critical, that a revised plan be submitted ahead of time for the engineer's review. Some things require agreement from the township that we were going to investigate. So again, we weren't going to talk specifics until, unless this was going to be a contested hearing tonight. So I'm avoiding that. But these are major issues. These are important issues. And that was the understanding. A plan would be submitted to the town, to the town engineer, excuse me, to the board engineer. And that hasn't been done. And we don't have, Mr. Shay said, we do not have the agreement yet. And we don't have it, then we have full-blown opposition tonight. And that's not what we're looking for. We're very close to, I think, reaching a resolution.
When do you feel comfortable? When you feel comfortable that you can have the work out between both of you? Mr. Hirsch?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that.
Where, how much? When do you feel comfortable that you could come to some compromise with the applicant? Going through the plans and agreeing?
If you're asking me, do I feel comfortable with the compromises? We do not at this point, because we haven't gotten the plan revised with all the changes.
No, I think the question was, what kind of time do you need before you'd be comfortable to come in and respond and know whether you're satisfied? I think he's looking.
It's really. I would think, yeah, I understand now. Thank you. No, I mean, they've submitted a revised plan to us, which is still not quite there. I think we can resolve it in a relatively short period of time. I mean, I think it was carried to the next meeting. Look, we're either gonna resolve it or not. The problem with this is, although we submitted the plan in June 14th, we weren't able to get the conference call with Mr. Shay and his engineer until Friday, July 1. And so we had July 4th weekend, and we have a meeting tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Renner.
We had a resolve.
Mr. Renner.
It sounds like we're getting into the application over here, the merits of the application without, everybody's trying to skirt around what the merits are, you know, what the objection is. I think. Right, I understand. You want to stay away from it. If the applicant wants to go forward with their application, it's at their own risk. They submitted an application. They should have a right to be heard. And if we want to get into the merits, yes or no, let's do it later in the meeting if we get to it. If it's 9 o'clock, we don't get to it.
Yeah, my only question is, the opposing attorney is not ready to, he's home right now, and he doesn't even have a folder. I think that's what he said before.
And Mr. Renner?
You want to go forward, to go forward with the original plan that was submitted? And then if we would like the changes, we'll go along with the change. Like, I don't understand why this is different than any time we have an opposing attorney on any application. And you're.
Usually when we have an opposing attorney, we do give the courtesy. If he can't make it in a meeting, we try to accommodate him to make it to that meeting. Mr. Jackson, what do you, what do you recommend?
There, you know, Mr. Renner is correct. The board could certainly say, let's go forward, you know, the applicant. But there's also a thread in the law that says if an attorney has a difficulty, like he has a family issue and he can't get to his file. And, and I think there's a practice aspect. Mr. Hirsch indicated that he's trying to work it out and that they're close to that. And otherwise, it's going to be a full-blown opposition. You know, you might say, as the board in your discretion, we'll give it one more chance before we come back, before he's been, you know, a whole flood, flood festival for the whole thing. So, I mean, that's, that's the balance that you have.
So let me poll the board and we'll see what's going on with it or not.
Chairman, I'm sorry, just before you start that, for the record, we have some board members with conflicts who have stepped down for this discussion and this application. And that would be Mr. Sable, Mr. Flansbrough, and Mr. Meyer. So you can poll the rest of the board.
Okay. Mr. Renner, you felt that we should go ahead. Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Yeah, do you think we should go ahead tonight or we should wait?
Oh, wait.
Okay, Mr. Flansbrough's not on. Who else is on? Hector?
All right, we should move on with it.
We should go on tonight, go forward?
Yes.
Okay. Who else do we have on?
And Mr. Ratzek.
Mr. Ratzek, do you think we should listen to it tonight or not?
If the person presenting it, am I on? The person presenting it wants to go ahead with it tonight, then I think they have the right to go ahead with it. Notice was given.
Okay. So, Mr. Isaacson, what do you think? Is he's voting? You think the what?
I think we should hear it.
Okay, so.
Full-blown opposition. It's full-blown opposition, but.
Okay, so majority of the board who can vote has said that they would like to hear it tonight. So I would ask Mr. Hirsch, we won't get to it. And we can call you in about an hour, and hopefully, when we get to it, that you should come back on again. Ally, I would ask you.
Yeah, I have to. I can't just stay on all the time. I have other things.
I would ask.
Call back, I'll have to call back in an hour.
No, I would ask Ally, can Ally, can you reach out to him when we're getting to the end of Hamda Satorah?
Yes.
Okay, you have Mr. Hirsch's number with the region?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, let's go on to number two.
Okay, this is SD 2477, made by Yeshiva Hamda Satorah. It's a major subdivision to create 74 lots on Cross and Massachusetts.
Says eight over there.
Yes, my brain said 74. I think it's 74 residential lots, but there are 78 lots altogether.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ally. Okay, Terry, as soon as your Ally brings it up, you can go through the report, please.
All right, thank you, Chairman. I'm reading from our June 1st review, as Ally has on the screen. Beginning on the bottom of page four, under submission waivers. Those waivers include proof of submission to county planning board, topo contours, and man-made features within 200 feet. And I believe that's all the waivers listed, and we support them for hearing purposes as stipulated in the letter.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation to grant the waivers?
So moved.
Moved. Second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, on to zoning, please.
All right, continuing under zoning on page five. Comment number two, minimum lottery variances are required for open space lots. That's what Ally was just talking about. You have several non-residential lots that are shown as part of the subdivision. The lots in particular there are for a 60.35, 60.36. And then you have minimum lot with variances that are required for several of the open space lots. That's our comment three. Appears that there is a minimum front yard setback variance required for the proposed community building lot, 60.32. And buffer variance relief is necessary for the community building, being that it will serve as a place of worship. Continuing on, parking setback variance for the community building is also required. That's it under variance relief. And then under design waivers on page six. A design waiver is sought from improving Dustbaum Avenue along the property frontage as well as the lot spacing specified in the UDO for proposed street trees. And since more than 25 residential units are proposed with the project, a design waiver is required from providing the minimum 5% continuous open space for recreational purposes. And finally, design waiver is required from proposing sidewalk along the Keystone Drive and No Strand Avenue subdivision front. And that's relieved, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Who's the attorney on this application?
Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, here on behalf of the applicant. As Terry indicated, we have a few variances on this application. But what I will, what you will hear from the testimony is that they're really technical variances and not the actual. For example, when Terry talked about that there was a 5% open space, but we're seeking a waiver from that. We do have the 5% of the open space, only it's not contiguous. In designing this application, designing this project, we stepped back and wanted to make sure that there were spaces throughout the development that there would be places for kids to play in, as opposed to just one large, one large 5% area. So we do have that 5%. I don't want anybody thinking that we're trying to skirt the issue. We've just broken it up throughout the development. As far as the other, and those are open space lots. As far as the few other variances that they were seeking, they had to do with the community building. And if the board wishes, we have no problem. While we think it's justified in granting those few variances. If the board is not happy with them and wants to see less variances, we have no objection to minimizing the size of the community building so as to conform with the variances. I do have this evening two witnesses. I have Brian Flannery to address any engineering or planning testimony. And we have Scott Kennel to address any traffic testimony. And he did prepare a report, and that was submitted with the application as well. At this time, Mr. Chairman, if I can swear in our first witness, Mr. Flannery, I will ask that after he's sworn in, if you can accept his credentials as a.
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Mr. Flannery, do you have a firm testimony to give me further proof of the truth, the whole group?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional plant. The application, as indicated, tonight is for a preliminary final major subdivision to create 78 lots. The 73 would be single-family residential lots, a community center, and three open space lots. The property is 14.84 acres. And we were here before the board in March of 2020 with an application where the board took a vote that it was a complete application, and therefore we could do a reduced intensity of development based on an ordinance that the governing body had adopted. A complete application had been submitted for a campus. Campuses are permitted at 28 units per acre. This is an application that, based on the ordinance that we fully comply with, we're allowed R75 density, which is at 8.7 units per acre. So at 28 units per acre, this piece of property could have had 415 dwelling units. At 8.7 dwelling units per acre, the property could have had 129 dwelling units if we tried to maximize it. We're here with 73 dwelling units, which is a substantial reduction to the density, which was stated in the reasoning for the township adopted ordinance, which allowed an application, which was before the board for a campus, to come in as an alternative. So looking at the particular piece of property, I'm sure the board is all familiar with it. We have A1, which is an exhibit which shows the subject property in red. It's across the street from the Fairways Development. It's catty-cornered from the Enclave Development. And to the east of it is the Harstow Development. It's in the Cross and Massachusetts core, which was first envisioned as part of the Smart Growth Plan and later incorporated in in the master plan of 2017. As Adam indicated, the relief that we're requesting is strictly related to the open space lots and the proposed shul. We're proposing a neighborhood shul. I'd like to add that in reflection, we felt that it would be appropriate to include on that shul lot in the area between the shul and Cross Street, a tot lot associated with the shul, so there'd be a place for the children to congregate. And that area would accommodate a tot lot. It would be fenced and would have access from the front where the shul is to accommodate that tot lot. If the board acts favorably on the application during resolution compliance, we would provide details to provide a appropriate tot lot. The reflection on that came when the board approved the other campus application in the same cross. uh, in the same, uh, across the Massachusetts, uh, core, uh, where that applicant came in without a tot lot. And the board said with a, a development of this type, you need to have a tot lot. So, uh, the, the applicant is agreeing to that. With respect to the relief that's required for the, uh, shul, for both the setbacks uh, and the, and the parking setbacks, uh, the applicant, uh, is amenable to making it smaller if the board feels that relief uh, is, uh, is too much. Uh, there is no requirement in the ordinance to provide a shul. The requirement, the ordinance is strictly to provide open space. This applicant i- is doing the right thing, both with the shul and the tot lot in providing it and providing more parking than is required by ordinance for the shul that was proposed. Um, additionally.
Through the chairs. Brian, can you explain to me, what do you mean, uh, shul is not required? This is a campus for what?
Well, then, no, this is, this is not a campus. There was an ordinance passed in two thousand and eighteen that said an applicant that has a complete application for a campus at that point, that applicant would be able to, as an alternative, come back with an R seven five market rate housing. So these will be regular houses that'll pay taxes. Uh, therefore, it's not required a shul. It, it's required to submit, and I, I can read you the exact language. Uh, it's, it's required to submit an application in accordance with the R seven five. So this application that's submitted is in accordance with the R seven five zoning regulations. And the R seven five zoning regulations say if you have more than twenty-five units, you have to have five percent open space set aside. And, and as Adam indicated, we do have five percent open space set aside. Five percent of the fourteen point eight four acres would be thirty ta- thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-one square feet. Uh, we provided thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and five square feet. The mo- majority of it is in the shul lot. But there's three other open space lots, which are situated throughout the development, uh, to, to provide open space in other areas as well. The shul lot itself is thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-one square feet, which is four point nine 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 percent. So the shul lot by itself doesn't make it. It's nine hundred square feet short, uh, but we provided twelve thousand, uh, square feet. Not twelve thousand, twelve hundred square feet, um, uh, around the, uh, in, in the other open space lots to accommodate the shortage that, uh, was there.
Now, Brian, the density, the density of R seven five is less than the, the density on a campus ordinance, is that correct?
Campus allows a density of twenty-eight dwelling units per acre. The R seven five allows eight point seven, uh, dwelling units per acre. We're proposing four point nine two dwelling units per acre. Fifty percent less than the R seven five and, and a whole lot less than the campus and a whole lot less than the application for campus that was submitted.
Okay. You want to go?
And, and, and I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the, the lot sizes. It is twelve thousand square feet. So we were short nine hundred on the, uh, uh, shul lot. And we've compensated for that shortage of nine hundred by providing, uh, uh, twelve thousand square feet uh, in other, uh, spaces in, in the development.
Where are the other spaces, if you don't mind just pointing that out?
Uh, Ally can, can. Uh, there, there's a couple of them at the entrance row. Those are the smaller ones. And, and then we have, uh.
I don't know.
Let me see what the other lot numbers were. And it was lots, uh, sixty point three five, sixty point three six, um, seven point one one, um. I think there was one other. One second.
The, the, the lots on the entrance row, there's twenty-four hundred square feet on each side, uh, the. I'm gonna have the, uh. Yeah, I, I, I looked at the map, uh, quickly and, and, uh, I, I had been going by the report and the report indicated a, a lot of, uh, ten thousand square feet. I, I don't see that one anywhere. So we have, for open space, we have those other two lots at twenty-four hundred square feet each to compensate for the nine hundred square feet that's short, uh, in the, uh, on the shul lot.
What, what percent do you have open space right now? You exceed the five percent, right?
We, we, we have four point nine 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 percent with just the shul lot, which was short nine hundred feet. Then we have an additional forty-eight hundred square feet, uh, on those two other open space lots.
Okay. Uh.
So, so just to be clear, there are no, like, other tot lots throughout the neighborhood, right?
There, there are no other tot lots. These, these are open space lots that will be owned by the homeowner association. If the homeowner association wanted to put in benches, if, if the board felt that benches or something of that nature were needed, the, the applicant would do it. We felt that we're providing the tot lot, uh, with the shul. Um, so, uh, um, the, the other ones wouldn't be needed.
No, no problem. I just wanted to clarify. I just wanted to understand the application. The next thing I, 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 I just, you said that the, the density is much less than what you really could get in the R seven five zone. Can you just explain, you said each one of these duplex lots are twelve thousand square feet. So, aren't you giving over here the, the correct density for R seven five? So what do you mean that there's other, that you're giving less density?
The density that's permitted, uh, by ordinance is eight point seven dwelling units per acre. Because we've done the road configuration the way it is, because we provided a, a future lot, uh, for the Yeshiva, uh, and, and because, uh, we provided the additional, um, uh, open space lots. Uh, there, there was additional density that the R seven five allows by right. If this was a plan that was just to squeeze everything in, uh, it, it, it would have more units.
But it wouldn't have more units on the space where you're building the residential units now. It would have just, it would be additional units on the area where the Yeshiva is, correct?
Well, there'd be additional units on the area where the Yeshiva is, and there's also single families that could be replaced with duplexes, which would increase the density.
It would be, you said that there would be additional units on the place where, on this, on the place where the current residential units are?
Yes, there, there's, uh, single family units that are proposed. And those single family units are on seventy-five hundred square foot lots. So if they were made as duplexes instead of single families, for each two single families, you could get three duplex units. So you, you could theoretically increase the number beyond what is shown.
And, Brian, could you show me the, the circulation plan over here?
Well, the, I, I was getting to, if we go to, uh, A two. A two is the overall site development, uh, and, and what this shows is the paper streets, uh, Nostr- Nostrand Avenue and Columbus Avenue.
One second. Ally, could you bring it up?
I don't have what Brian has. My A two is an aerial without the site layout sheet, so I have to open up. Oh, that, that, the rendering, the rendering, I have A three. Hold on.
Okay. Yours doesn't look like it goes as far as mine. Can, can you? There you go. Okay. So, uh, what we're doing is improving, uh, paper streets that come out to Cross Street. Uh, the Nostrand Avenue and Columbus Avenue. Uh, and, and on other applications that you've seen, the applicants have put either a hammerhead turnaround or a, uh, a cul-de-sac at those points. What this applicant is doing, uh, to be a benefit to the area is improving those, uh, a thousand feet off-site, creating a, a circular pattern so that, uh, uh, A, it, it provides better access for those two pa- paper streets. B, it, it improves the, uh, internal, uh, in, inside the core, the roadway improvements. So that ultimately, when all these paper streets get improved, uh, it, it'll improve traffic in that it's a neighbor here that wants to visit a neighbor that's over near Prospect Street or, or Massachusetts Avenue, rather than going on Cross Street, Massachusetts, and, and coming out and creating more traffic on the major collector roads. It provides an opportunity to go through. We, we're about eight hundred feet from Massachusetts Avenue. So that the next developer that develops in this area, i- if they, uh, improve, um, Nassau Street, uh, it, it would connect to Massachusetts Avenue and it provides a, another traffic movement, uh, also if the board remembers.
Which, which one is Nassau? The back road?
Nassau is the back road.
Okay.
If the board remembers, they approved, uh, the, the campus that was previously called the Strickman Campus, uh, to the, uh, uh, north, uh, or, or east of us. Uh, and, and, and that's the property in here, so that Nassau connects to them also. And then it provides, uh, with, with, uh, they're the ones to the, to the north of us, the ones that were approved. Uh, they, they're just off this map where the, the lots are shown. Uh, but it, it's block, uh, four fifty-seven, four fifty-eight, uh, four sixty-six. And, and you could see that on A one was, was submitted. And then those projects, uh, uh, improve Nussbaum, uh, out to Cross Street. So that, that adds more improved roadways in this area, which will be helpful for, uh, circulation. And it's certainly, uh, hundreds of thousands more than just putting cul-de-sacs at this point. But the, the applicant, uh, i- is coming with a project that, that he feels fits in the area. And if you look at the surrounding development, uh, that's shown on what was A two, the aerial, um, um, you see that it's, you have the enclave down here, you have, uh, the, 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 uh, the fairways, uh, and, uh, I should, yeah, uh, and, uh, and, um, Hearthstone Development. So it's, it's, and, and, and all the trees that are shown here are part of the, uh, uh, Cross and Massachusetts Core that the township and, and their planning has indicated to be developed to accommodate the, the housing growth that's coming to Lakewood.
And Brian, on, on Cross Street, you're putting sidewalks?
We're putting sidewalks. We're widening it. We're making, uh, traffic improvement con- contributions to both the county and the township. Uh, and, and, and widening both Cross and Massachusetts, providing additional right-of-way dedication on both. Um, so the, the applicant is doing its fair share, uh, to accommodate the growth that's proposed in this area in accordance with the ordinance.
Because the synagogue is on Keystone, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the only way Columbus and Nostrand could go is through Cross Street. That's where we must have sidewalks going all the way through.
Yes, yes, and, and, and sidewalks are proposed along the entire frontage. Uh, widening of the roads, sidewalks along all of the roadways. Uh, I, I think there was one comment on, uh, a design waiver for street trees. Uh, but the applicant certainly intends to comply with the intent of the ordinance with street trees. Will provide street trees wherever they're, uh, wherever they fit. Uh, where we show the, uh, the, the shul and, and now the tot lot and some of the parking. It, it constrains the, uh, the placement of street trees to an extent. We would certainly work with the township engineer, but it, it's none of the residential development, uh, that's, uh, requiring a design waiver.
Chief, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Terry.
Yeah, just want to get clarification, Brian. Uh, you just testified, I thought, that you're proposing sidewalk. Uh, in our review under design waivers, uh, our comment four, uh, we interpreted that a design waiver was required, uh, for sidewalk along Keystone Drive and Nostrand Avenue. Are you proposing sidewalk there?
Um, sidewalk on Nostrand is the, uh, Paper Street.
Okay.
That, that, we don't really have any developable property.
Okay, all right, so that'll be a way.
No, that's, that's nut, that's Nussbaum. Uh, and, and then the other place where we're not proposing sidewalk is where we're doing the off-site roadway in, in the off-track improvement. Uh, we're also asking not to put sidewalk in because we feel the applicant is doing more than their fair share by improving those roadways so that we get vehicular circulation. Uh, and, and we're not creating any walkable areas that, that the sidewalk would be.
Okay, in front of all your houses on Nostrand and Columbus, you're bu- you're bu- you're putting sidewalks?
Yes.
On the whole building area, you're putting sidewalks?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Wh- wh- where's the current Yeshiva building? Can you point that out?
The current Yeshiva building is, i- if you look at, uh, A three, um, um, Ally's gotta slide that down a little. There you go. Right at the, the top right-hand corner. That's the current Yeshiva building.
So that, according to what you're saying, if you're not gonna put sidewalks in on Nostrand Avenue on the side of the Yeshiva building, then it's never gonna get sidewalk. How will it ever get sidewalk there?
Uh, that, that's a good point. We would agree to put sidewalk there.
Another thing, when you improve Nostrand Avenue and Columbus Avenue, and I thank you for doing that, are you gonna, what happens when you end up, I think you said it's Nassau Street? What happens over there? Are you making a?
We're, we're making, we're, we're making a hammerhead. Um, so that, a- anybody that, I, I, I don't know why they would make a hammerhead turn there. We provided a complete circulation pattern to get back out to. But i- if somebody was driving along and decided they made a mistake and wanted to go back home to pick up their wallet or whatever, they'd have the opportunity to make a hammerhead turn at that point, uh, and, and proceed back.
Instead of making a full circle, going all the way around?
Correct.
Okay.
No, really, my question is like, you're not finishing it off like a cul-de-sac there so that it can be improved further one day?
Correct. We're, we're leaving a hammerhead where, uh, installing the returns at those intersections and providing, uh, the roadway, uh, to the end of those returns, which can be used as a hammerhead. But we're not providing a, a cul-de-sac because it's, it's our opinion that those roads are gonna be improved. And, and we're making an improvement a part of it to help facilitate the, the quicker improvement of that internal roadway pattern, uh, which will provide more, uh, traffic opportunities that don't require people to go on to, uh, Cross Street.
Uh, what, what are you doing with garbage?
Garbage would be, it, all, all the units will have rollout containers and, and whatever the department.
Public Works, Public Works truck could make the turn on Nassau?
Yes.
And come out again?
It's, it's a, it's a regular. It's a regular, uh, thirty-two foot wide Lakewood Street, uh, and the, and the cul-de-sacs are RSIS compliant cul-de-sacs.
And, uh, buses could go in, the pickup for kids will be?
Yes.
In, in the complex?
Correct.
Okay, is there anything in the report you can't agree to?
Well, I, I, I wanted to touch on the, uh, variance relief specifically so that I, I have it on the record and, and then provide, uh, justification, uh, for those variances because I, I think the relief that we're requesting, uh, is de minimis.
Sorry, Brian, Brian, sorry, before you get to the variances, through the chair, are you proposing on-street parking?
Uh, there'll be thirty-two foot wide, uh, roadways. So, uh, the typical, uh, Lakewood Township Road allows parking on both sides. If, if the board wanted us to.
How many, how many spots are, how many parking spots are proposed for each town, for each townhouse?
A, a, a minimum of four. A minimum of four and a time of plot plan, if they have more bedrooms, uh, and need more, we're not looking for any relief with respect to parking.
So each parking spot for each structure?
Four, there'll be four parking spaces minimum for each residential dwelling.
And you have more room, if you have to add, you can add more. If you have more bedrooms.
Yes, the, the buildings could, could be slid back. There's, there's ways to get more parking if, uh, somebody that's building a house has a need for more bedrooms, which generates the need for more parking.
Okay, please go through the variances.
Does the community center building have any additional parking?
The community center building, uh, if, if you go by the ordinance requirement for parking, um, thirty-one are required and forty-five spaces have been provided.
Okay, um, and what variances do you have?
Terry lists the, uh, relief required on, um, um, on, uh, page five of the report. Uh, and, uh, item one indicates that it's a permitted use. Item two indicates minimum lot area variances, uh, for proposed lots sixty-three point, sixty-point three-five and sixty-point three-six. Uh, twenty-four hundred square feet are proposed, whereas seventy-five hundred square feet is required. A minimum lot, uh, width variances are proposed for lots seven-point-one-one and the same six-point-three-five and six-point-three-six, uh, with the twelve feet, uh, for the, uh, lot frontage of new lot seven-point-one-one, um, and lot widths of sixteen feet for sixty-point three-five and sixty-point-three-six, where fifty feet are required.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, then we get to, uh, four and five, which are respect, with respect to the shul, uh, minimum front yard setback, uh, of twenty feet, uh, is proposed where twenty-five feet is required, uh, and a buffer of ten feet where twenty feet is required. And, and the shul is to a new community. It's in a location that has, provides for pedestrian access. Uh, from Cross Street, we provided the sidewalks. It has pedestrian access from Massachusetts. Again, we provided sidewalks to the site, uh, as well as sidewalks on the, uh, the cul-de-sacs, uh, where the, the shul is located. Uh, it, it will be a neighborhood shul. The, we're, we're not asking, there'll be no catering in the basement. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, parking that's required per the, uh, ordinance standard, uh, it, we're exceeding, uh, and, and, and we think it makes sense to request that relief with respect to, to, uh, to that, so that there's a shul to accommodate as many people as possible. Uh, we also need a parking setback for the, uh, the shul. And you can see the shul is put at the end of the cul-de-sac. The parking is at the intersection of, uh, Cross and, and Massachusetts. We respect all of the, uh, the site triangle easements. We need county approvals for all of it. Uh, we, we're, uh, providing additional right-of-way, uh, as required by the county. We're providing road widening as required by the county. Uh, uh, the design waivers that we're asking for, uh, as indicated, the project has frontage on, on Nussbaum Avenue. And Nussbaum is that, that, that little strip, that this is a strange piece of property that has this little strip that goes all around there. Uh, we're not proposing to improve that because, uh, we're not doing any development there. Uh, we're asking for a design waiver.
Can you just stop one second? Ali, stop the map, stop right there. Well, how come, how come, could you go, uh, go a little higher, Ali, on the map? How come we're not coming out of this cul-de-sac and like attaching it? Like where this green is, what's this green? Why can't we continue the cul-de-sac and come out and meet, right, meet Nostrand Avenue? And then have another access point to?
So who owns that property?
It, it's for future development for the yeshiva. And Rabbi Przansky, uh, has a yeshiva that, um, uh, is, is very successful and, and he's looking, he's to have the flexibility to do something in there for the yeshiva. And it's a very short cul-de-sac. It's much less than, than, uh, the RSIS requires and, and he's, uh, reserving that, uh, property for a future yeshiva use.
Wouldn't the entire circulation of the whole project work so much better?
I, I don't think so because there are a certain number of people who prefer to be on a cul-de-sac that doesn't have all that cross traffic. And you see the number of units, uh, that are proposed on that cul-de-sac is less than the, the total number of units. So we, we, it's kind of like the project is split into two. The, the ones that like, uh, a shul frontage, uh, you know, it's like waterfront. Some people like to be on the waterfront, some people don't. The shul frontage, it's more, uh, isolated. This way the shul doesn't create, you know, the through traffic on, on the, uh, other internal streets. The, the, it, it kind of encourages people to walk more, uh, with the location of the shul and with not having the, the through access. And, and Rabbi Przansky has visions of using that to accommodate the growth of the yeshiva.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
A, a design waiver is also required with respect to the street trees. As I indicated, we will put trees in wherever they fit, uh, to the extent a design waiver is required. We're asking for that. Uh, item four says, uh, we need a design waiver for the five percent contiguous open space and we are providing five percent. If you read the ordinance with respect to, to that, uh, it's, it's a little ambiguous. What the ordinance reads is, um, uh, that's not, that's not the one I'm trying to read. Section eighteen dash eight oh eight, provisions for park and recreation. Uh, A1, not less than five percent of land area of every residential major subdivision or residential site plan consisting of twenty-five or more units shall be preserved as open space or dedicated to active recreational or community facilities. Uh, then A under that says, with the exception of the provisions in section eighteen dash nine oh four below, uh, and, and there is no section eighteen dash nine oh four below, uh, the required open space area shall be contiguous free of environmental constraints such as floodplains, wetlands and all that. So it's saying there are some of section, uh, exceptions to that, but it's not telling you what they are. We are free of floodplains and wetlands and body of water and all the other stuff. All of the passive and active recreation area is usable property. So, uh, and, and, and then, uh, design waivers required for a proposing sidewalk along the entire Keystone Drive. And it, the section of Keystone Drive where there isn't sidewalk is where we've provided parking. We provide sidewalk all the way in front of the shul, all the way out to Cross Street, uh, all the way up Keystone, around the other side, down the, the two sides, and again up to the parking area. So we can provide crosswalks, we can provide, uh, whatever other, uh, improvements the board would like. We could provide sidewalk if we eliminate some parking. My opinion is that the parking, uh, is a better alternative and, and it's appropriate. Uh, obviously, if the board feels differently, we would defer to the expertise of the board. So with respect to the relief that we're requesting, uh, we look to the, any, any of the relief is a C2 variance at most. Uh, when we look to the Lakewood Master Plan of two thousand and seventeen, uh, the background information on page two talks about all the growth and it concludes on page three, based on this information, it's therefore a coordinate Lakewood Plan for Residential Development to House Its Growing Population. And, and it's my testimony that this does this. Uh, the vision statement says encourage development and redevelopment, uh, based on, uh, inappropriate locations consistent with established land uses. And, and this isn't really established land uses. I mean, the, the projects that surround us on three sides are, uh, established land uses, but they're like communities to within themselves. This is consistent with what the Smart Growth Plan had envisioned, uh, for this area. And, and this is what was envisioned when the township adopted, uh, the section, uh, ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash thirty-five, which is now section eighteen dash nine hundred J with respect to these residential districts. The Municipal Land Use Law NJSA forty colon fifty, uh, fifty-five D dash two, under the purpose of the act, A is encouraging municipal action to guide appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will provide public health, safety, morals and general welfare. It's my testimony that this does this because this applicant has gone above and beyond what he could have done trying to be a minimal type developer. Uh, C is to provide adequate light air and open space and, and I think clearly it does this. Uh, E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions and preservation of the environment. And certainly it's my testimony that this does this. We, we talked about the density. I, I vindicated how they could have squeezed more on here, uh, but have elected not to. Uh, so for the C2 variance, we need to show it relates to a specific piece of property. This is a piece of property in the, uh, Cross and Massachusetts Core, which was slated for development to accommodate the, the future growth that we know is coming. The purpose of the Municipal Land Use Law, I've indicated, uh, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and it, and it's my testimony that, that it's actually a benefit to the public good. We're providing market rate housing, which is needed and a density less than would be permitted under the campus, which a complete application was submitted. The, uh, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance and my testimony is that it's virtually a conforming application, uh, and the benefits outweigh the detriments. And, and my testimony is that, uh, the only detriments there are is with respect to developing property. And this is a, a vacant piece of property, uh, in, in what's been designated as a core for development and this is the appropriate use for this property. Uh, so, uh, continuing in the report, uh, with respect to, uh, review comments, uh, one of the questions Terry asks is with respect to an Ocean County drainage easement in the property. And obviously we need county approval. We're rerouting that and providing stormwater management. So it, it'll be an improvement and it's something that needs to be approved by the, uh, Ocean County. Um, uh, on page seven, uh, Terry asks if there will be a homeowners association? Yes, there will, will be a homeowners association to maintain drainage, to maintain the open space lots. Um, uh, item, item five is with respect to the ownership and maintenance responsibilities and, and we are proposing the same, the typical ownership and maintenance responsibilities. The Department of Public Works maintains the, uh, the improvements within the right-of-way and homeowners association will improve, will maintain all other improvements and we need DPW approval if the board acts favorably on this. Um, the off-street parking for the, uh, the community building, the shul, we've already indicated, uh, per the ordinance thirty-one, the spots are needed, forty-five are proposed and, and there will be no, uh, no catering in the facility. It will be a neighborhood shul. Uh, the, uh, the design has been done in accordance with the new stormwater management rules, which were, uh, adopted by the state, uh, in March, uh, and, and it provides for, uh, more, uh, green type of infrastructure. There are rain gardens proposed and, and, and stormwater features to provide for some, uh, bio-cleaning of, of some of the runoff. Um, and there were some other questions on, um, on who's going to maintain, as I indicated, anything within the right-of-way would be public works, subject to their approval. Everything else will be by the homeowners association. On page eleven, uh, Terry indicates the Prospect Street Core Transportation Improvement District, a fee that would be required, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars. The county also has, uh, impact fees that they require and we would satisfy all of the comments in Terry's report if the board acts favorably on the application.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Flannery?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, Mr. Ritz, you said first.
Thank you. Uh, Brian, tooth points. Number one, people wanting to drive to shul, uh, would have to go on to, uh, Cross and Massachusetts in order to get there because there's no walkway through, is that correct?
There, uh, are walkways along Cross and Massachusetts. There, there is no, uh, cutthroat. Uh, I would envision when Rabbi Przansky develops the, uh, the lot that's, uh, reserved for future, uh, development for the, uh, yeshiva, that there would be some, uh, walking through there. But other than that, they, they would have to walk on, on Cross or Massachusetts.
Why can't they propose it now? I, I think it's ridiculous to make people have to go onto the main street.
Um, if, if, if that's an issue for the board, we, we could certainly agree to provide a, uh, pedestrian access from Nostrand Avenue.
Not only pedestrian, but maybe a cutthroat by vehicle as well?
Prop doesn't belong to them, so belongs to Przansky.
So then Przansky is the applicant?
Przansky is the applicant and, and he doesn't want to have, uh, vehicular traffic through there. He, he's looking to, uh, provide a, a yeshiva, uh, area and a residential area, uh, and, uh, the, the vehicular access.
But he's, he's directing cars onto, onto Cross and Massachusetts if people want to drive to the shul. He's not allowing it, you know, any other way. I mean, it's the winter, let's say, and people can't walk there, they want to take it through a car. They, they have no option but to make a right onto Cross and then make another, uh, then a left, sorry, a left onto Cross and then a left onto, uh, Massachusetts, is that correct?
Well, he's not, uh.
And then another left and back into the development.
Then another left back in, exactly. It's a, it's a lot of cutting across traffic.
He's not forcing them to do that because, but he's providing a shul that he's not required to provide by, by ordinance. Uh, all he's.
But if you build it, they will come.
But, and, and, and they will come and, and he's provided more parking than, than his.
They have to get there, I understand, but they, how are they getting there? The people in this development?
Have to get.
Making it for, not allowing them to get there without going onto the main street.
Uh, and.
The other side, Mr. Ritz, it's a small community, which, uh, if we don't have that access, then everybody's going to walk. It's not that far from the shul.
And, and we have a traffic, I'm sorry, we have a traffic engineer that can, uh, address the, uh, traffic impacts of this. Uh, and, and if you look at the times that, that the people would be going to shul versus when the peak, uh, traffic periods are, uh, Mr. Kennel can certainly address that issue.
Okay, second thing is, uh, you have a Columbus Avenue there? Is, there's another one in Lakewood. Why is it called Columbus here?
Uh, the tax map calls it Columbus. That's a very good point. And, uh, before we file the map, we have to get the street names approved and, and we will provide a, uh, a, a street name that's not a duplicate.
Okay, Mr. Sable.
If I could say one, one item, Mr. Chairman? Uh, the applicant indicated we could provide a walking path, uh, without an issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sable, you want to say something?
I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to go back to Mr. Ritz's concern. I don't think Brian answered it properly.
Okay, so go ahead.
Regarding, regarding, same question going to shul will be the same way the kids want to go to the park area. The kids from Keystone, they want to go to the park. Uh, I don't think it's fair for us to send them onto Massachusetts, go around and stay on Cross Street and, as Mr. Stern would say, cozy coops going all over, uh, Cross Street. We have to provide a, a, a pedestrian, at least, that's normal, all the way till the park.
Okay, so pedestrian, I think a pedestrian walkway, uh.
The applicant has agreed.
The applicant agreed to. I think they agreed to it. Okay.
To all, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just give me two minutes.
Yeah, take your time, I'm sorry. Not at all. Go ahead.
All the way till, Brian, is it all the way till the park or just till Nostrand? And can you show us where it's going to be?
Well, it, it would be from Keystone Drive to Nostrand. Uh, and. It would either be through the, uh, future yeshiva lot or it would be in between some of the units. Uh, and, and Rabbi Przansky is not here at the moment, so I can't ask him. Yes, it would be in accordance with lines that Ali has indicated. Yes, it would be in accordance with lines that Ally has indicated.
And then how about crossing from Nostrand to that so-called Columbus and then going back to the park?
That has a road in the back. Oh, you want all the paths?
Which park are you talking about, Sable?
By the shul.
Isn't that an open area in the back?
By the shul? Where?
That's somebody else's property.
I thought you were generous enough to put a park, a play area.
You did say tot lots somewhere down here, right? I don't know where, though.
Yes, we're adding a tot lot between the shul and Cross Street, behind the building. Yes, yes.
So all the disabled units don't have a normal play area?
We're providing a normal play area in that location.
So I think we have to go back to the first issue that we spoke about the 5% for open area. Do you have 5% of open area in total available for kids and people to play and enjoy? Yes or no?
We have 5% in accordance with the ordinance. The ordinance, and I can read it again, says 5% as common open space were dedicated to active recreation or community facilities. So...
Now, does 5% have to be combined? Does it have to be combined, or it can be spread apart, five feet at a time?
The ordinance says, with the exception of the provisions in section 18-904, which don't exist, it should be contiguous. So we have provided...
Contiguous means all together?
Yeah, but I think he testified that he has 4.99%.
4.999, four nines.
And you need...
One thing, correct?
And you need five.
Right, so that according to his dynamism...
That is definitely dementous.
And we have 4.99 open place in one area, correct? Where is that area?
The shul lot, the shul lot is the 4.999%. The applicant has proposed to put a shul there as opposed to leaving it just open for playground. If you remember, the previous two campuses that were approved, they didn't put a shul. They just put open space, less than 5% open space for tot lots. If the board feels the tot lots are more important than the shul, we can make the shul smaller, or we can eliminate the shul and have it all a big tot lot.
And legally, is there, Chairman, is there legal requirement to put a clubhouse in a certain development, a certain size, a certain number of units? A clubhouse without the 5% for open space? Is there any rule or any law?
Only in planned unit developments, which we are not.
What is the difference in this and a planned unit development, if you don't mind?
The planned unit developments are permitted in different zones, and there's regulations, and there's density associated with that that's greater than the density that's proposed here.
So on a planned unit, how many units do you have to put up in order to put a club out?
I don't have the planned unit developments right at my fingertips because they're not applicable to this. What I do have for this is the ordinance that stipulates what we need to provide, and it's the 5% as common open space or shall be dedicated to active recreation or community facilities. So...
Brian, let me ask you, on the shul lot, going on with Mr., do you have, if we build the shul, do we have any room to make any exercise equipment, to make a swing set in the back of the shul?
There's an area in the back of the shul that would accommodate that would accommodate a tot lot. It's 25 feet wide by more than 100 feet. And then you have a wraparound in front of the shul, which is probably, you know, a kind of a trapezoidal area that just that trapezoidal area would fit a tot lot. The applicant will provide a plan to provide a tot lot that would exceed the tot lots that were provided by the prior to subdivision applications that are located in this same...
But Brian, my opinion, my opinion, I think that the shul is very necessary, as big as possible, but we do need equipment for the tot lot. I think Mr. Sable is saying the same thing. As much as you can get on the shul property around it, and the other two lots that are 2,400, me personally, I would like to see the benches or something also for the neighborhood. It can be used for open lot for recreation.
Mr. Hersl, if I may, to Mr. Sable's point earlier, you know, Mr. Flannery is putting this in terms of it's either a playground or a tot lot. They are looking for variances. They could eliminate one of their lots and take that room. You know, don't think that this is, you know, something that has to be approved like it is. You know, with the driveways and the way the roads are, the parking, et cetera, all the things that the board has brought up, garbage pickup work, et cetera. They don't have to have this number of lots. The board doesn't like the layout or some of the issues.
Okay.
They are looking for some variance.
I would just like to provide clarification on that.
For a second also...
One at a time, one at a time.
John is still talking.
There was a question brought up by, excuse, there was a question brought up by Mr. Sable, I believe it was, about the park and recreation areas. And also, I think there was also a requirement that there be a community center in certain types of developments. And I don't see why you cannot look to that. This was a development that came in through a mechanism that was unique. Let's put it that way in the ordinances. And they were able to get this density, this location. I don't think it's inappropriate for the board to look at where amenities are required in other types of communities that are slurrish, that are size and the past. I just want to put that up because I don't want to sit here just silently.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, one second. One second. Mr. Sable, are you finished? You were holding me talking.
I would like to, I would like to say thank you, John, for this. And I want to add, on behalf of the approximately 400 kids, 400 kids, that's 74 units, with average five kids in every unit, I'm begging you, please, let's give them somewhere they can play safely. We don't have to do something fancy. I suggest maybe at the corner of Nostrand, where the yeshiva is, we can take off one corner, put in some play area where 500, 400 kids can play safely. Please, please, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, Mr. Sable, we hear you loud and clear.
Mr. Sable, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to remove the corner, lot 7.03. It's almost 9,700 square foot lot.
One second, Ally, can you please...
It's the corner.
I'm waiting for him to explain where it is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't know everything.
Okay.
That's not true, Ally. It's the corner of Columbus and Cross Street. There's a triangular lot there. No, right across from it. We can fence it, it's a nice, it's over 9,500, almost 9,700 square foot.
What is that lot? Is that a house, Ally?
We will remove the single-family lot, the single-family house, and create a playground for the children that I think that's a proper area for it. It's a nice-sized lot.
What type of protection would be between that lot and the street?
It'll be fenced on, the front of Cross would be fenced, light vinyl, whatever, how high the board would like to see.
And you could have equipment on there?
Is it not better to take away?
Mr. Sable, go ahead.
Mr. Fabbett, thank you. I really appreciate that. Not me, the kids are going to live there. Can we, I think, putting it in the center of the development, especially since Nostrand and Columbus, everything is going to have more houses, although it's not your responsibility to provide a park area for them, taking off some space from the yeshiva in the back towards Nostrand, which is more in center, less kids crossing, less kids going, not all the way in the end, parents aren't sure. Can we take off, leave the houses as is, so we don't ruin, don't take away any revenue from the builder, developer?
Mr. Sable, we're pulling away from that area, going on what you're saying. I think we want a walkway over there.
Right, we're still, they're doing a walkway regardless, from Nostrand to Keystone.
I don't know if they have room for a tot lot and the walkway going through the whole thing.
Ally, can you go up Keystone a mill, go up? Where meets Nostrand? Where meets Nostrand, that lot?
That's a duplex lot? On top, where the trees are?
Yeah, but go towards Nostrand.
That corner.
Somewhere there, we can, that'll be a beautiful place. I think if safe and accessible for everybody, we're going to do a nice walkway over there, so...
And I think, I think Mr. Sable, and they save a house over here if they do that. I'm sure it's worth it for them.
If I could suggest, Mr. Sable?
Yeah.
Do that location, you see the duplex that's just under the circle?
Right.
If we eliminate that duplex and make it a single, that'll save us enough to fit a playground, a tot lot, which is in that same location.
And then you would keep the single, you would keep the single on Massachusetts?
Correct.
Columbus. Okay, I drew one for the record.
And that's 7,500 square foot lot?
That's a 10,000 square foot lot, so we would take 2,500 square feet off it, make a tot lot. I should also point out, if you remember the application for the other yeshiva in this area, it's right up Columbus Avenue. If Ally goes to A1, Block 450, Lot 9, there's a tot lot there as well. So all the kids in the area that are looking for the tot lot, they would have one tot lot on Columbus, and then they would have another one on Nostrand.
Can you tell me again where that tot lot is?
Block 450, Lot 9. It's on Columbus, in the middle of the block. Yes.
And you're down here, down Columbus?
Yes, we would be down...
In Nostrand. This is where you're making the connection?
Correct, correct.
And the houses are all down here?
Yes. So that would...
I think on Nostrand is a good idea.
Yes.
Okay.
So 2,500, you want to provide 2,500 square feet?
And then, and Mr. Sable, that's included, that's on top of the open area by the shul?
Yes.
Okay, I don't want to lose that. And all the 2,400, then maybe we can put a bench over there for people walking around.
Yes.
So we have a lot of open area. Okay, Mr. Ritz, I think you wanted to say something.
Yes, I just wanted to know, do we get, do we get something from Columbus Avenue to Nostrand Avenue, a walking, a walkway also?
I think so. I, Columbus...
It was referenced, but I don't know if that was also, I don't recall about, on that.
In the area, from one street, from Columbus to Nostrand, and from Nostrand to whatever, Keystone.
Brian, can it be done?
I would suggest a location up at our property boundary, the top two duplexes. Yes. We would provide pedestrian access at that point. And I think when you look at the entire core, that'll provide a better pedestrian access.
Okay, thank you.
How is that pedestrian access going to be improved?
An S walking path.
Like a muddy walking path, or is it going to be cemented?
S walk, by two minutes concrete.
Okay.
Is there any way, could we get a, like a cement, like something more, something like the sidewalks?
If we can make it sidewalk, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Where is that, where is that, we're discussing that?
Well, I think we're, I think we were just talking about it at some point. I'm sorry, Ally, can you just move that screen? I apologize. I think, Mr. Sable, I think Brian was indicating through some of the houses, in between the houses, on each, there'd be one access point. Those will be maintained, there'll be an easement to the association, it'll be maintained by them.
Okay, the only other thing I'm going to say now, Mr. Sable, we have to connect the two green lines to make a sidewalk in that piece, by a small sidewalk. It should connect to...
They're going to go off on Nostrand.
They're putting sidewalk in over there on the side of the yeshiva, on...
Side yeshiva building?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to connect it, okay.
Yes.
Any other board members? Mr. Sable?
One last question, I believe.
No, so go ahead. No problem.
Around that yeshiva lot, and I guess along the pathway that Mr. Renner got us, can we put a gate around, like just one side, towards the open, towards the trees? And towards the yeshiva? So we could put a full chain link with some greenery that's permanently closed, so we don't have yeshiva walking through here and things safe for one way.
Yes.
And the next one also, across between Nostrand and Columbus? And my final question, let's go back to Nostrand and Columbus, or going around the turnaround. Mr. Flannery requested no sidewalks. Can we rediscuss this, please?
We're still requesting those, we're still requesting no sidewalks.
I'll explain the reason why, I think, because eventually, most of these will get developed, but I'm afraid one lot here, one lot there, it's not going to be developed. And then we're just going to have a big hole in the beautiful area. I think the developer is putting in a lot of money in here, adding a little sidewalk. It's not going to make it a breakage, man.
Sidewalk on one, on one side, Mr. Sable, if that is your last question.
Well, around the yeshiva, you're doing anyways.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sable, you're getting everything tonight.
Just ask a clarification?
It's not me, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to live there. There are going to be a lot of kids, kids are going to live there, and they're going to enjoy this space so nicely, and they'll appreciate the Brian, he's the best one, everybody.
Mr. Sable, I just didn't understand.
One at a time, one at a time.
I appreciate Brian spending Rabbi Przansky's money.
Okay.
Sorry?
Just for the clarification, just, Mr. Sable, you indicated a fence, I guess, in the middle greenery by those houses. I just, for putting the sidewalks there, do you still want a, I'm just, I don't see what the fence is going to do. There are going to be trees right now, those aren't our property, so it's not cleared yet. If you want the fence, I'm just trying to understand if we put a fence, if we're putting the sidewalk, I think that's sufficient, but we want a fence in between...
In between our property, in between this property and the property, I guess, between Columbus and Nostrand. So it's somewhat closed, it's somewhat safe, and keeps not running into the woods, into the fire that's not developed. I guess, I don't know, maybe not.
That's why I was asking, just if you, but again, if, we're not against it, I'm just trying to clarify.
So this is negotiable, I think. It's up to you.
Okay, okay. Is there any other board members? Thank you, Mr. Sable. Any other board members have any questions? Sinon would open it to the public. Ally, do we have anybody from the public who would like to be heard on this application?
Mr. Chairman, we still have another witness. Just before we, and if nobody has any other questions, Mr. Flannery, we do have Mr. Kennel. Again, we have, Mr. Kennel has submitted a report. If the board is okay with it, we have no problem just submitting and relying on our report. But if you have any questions, Mr. Kennel, we have no objection to him swearing him in and having him address any concerns.
Okay, we'll wait, right there. Do we have anybody from the public?
We have two public comments from earlier, and also a few that came from Mr. Zynas today. I can just read through them if you'd like.
Okay, please.
Okay, Mr. Stern, Mr. Yitzhak Stern says he'd like to speak up against the application to make 70-plus houses. As a resident of the area, I am aware firsthand that the road infrastructure cannot handle any additional traffic in the area. We cannot approve additional houses until all the roads are clearer, being that the courts have ruled that contingencies are not allowed. This application should be tabled until actual improvements are made. not allowed, this application should be tabled until actual improvements are made. Um, the second one is from Yosef Rieger, just looking for, he didn't give his address. Um, dear board, your job is to look after the well-being of Lakewood residents in that capacity, it is your duty to deny this application for seventy-three homes, township needs planning to assure that infrastructure is developed in a responsible manner to guarantee the quality of life of township residents. This is usually done through master plans, which look at the larger picture of roads and zoning, and make sure that development is only done in areas and volume that can be maintained by the available road grid. As the members of the board well know, the plans for this application were made possible by direct and specific alterations to the township's master plan, which were only incorporated so that these houses can garner approval, meaning that these homes stand contrary to reasonable development, and only through a backdoor arrangement during the master plan writing process did these homes become feasible. More so, these homes will be in close proximity to the proposed development at Eagle Ridge, where blind-eyed legal work on behalf of Lakewood has assured that the township will be mandated to allow the construction of five hundred fifty-six homes on that lot. The planning board has courageously spoken up against that development at the time, demanding road improvements, but developers have pulled the wool over the eyes of Lakewood residents, and have used the courts to strong-arm the applications without the knowledge of the unsuspecting neighbors who suffer in traffic every day. Approving this application across the street from the upcoming development at Eagle Ridge would be crime of conscience. Every member of the board knows that they should care about the well-being of Lakewood residents, they would deny the application. Should the answer be that circumstances have tied your hands, and you must approve this application at this point as a right of application, I call on you to do the proper thing and resign your post. You will set a strong message that corruption shall no longer reign in Lakewood. And then we did receive three emails from Mr. Zinis, I'll read them in order. The first one, the open space lots need to be real playgrounds with real swings, because real kids will live in this development. Why is there a request for a sidewalk waiver along Keystone and Nostrand? These roads definitely do need sidewalks. His second one says, the traffic report indicates that the Cross Street and Massachusetts Avenue intersection will operate at an overall level of service D. Is this before the county widens the intersection, or after the county widens it? What is in the basement of the shul, a mikvah, a banquet hall? And then thirdly, a recommendation, I urge the board to recommend that the applicant request that the township post no parking signs along the cul-de-sac bulbs to ensure that buses and large vehicles can safely turn around. That was.
Okay, is there anybody, can you please unmute everybody? And let's see if anybody who, any callers would like to speak.
I think there's only two or three on here. If anyone's waiting to speak on this application, I believe all unnamed callers on here have been unmuted.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to be heard in this application? Please state your name. Okay, we'll close it to the public.
Through the chairman. I'd like to just, I'd just like to respond to one of the comments regarding the master plan.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Pretty of the master plan process, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
During the master, during the master plan process, um, the board has suggested at that time, that anyone that has approval for a, a, um, yeshiva, a, a, a development for, I forget what it's called, the.
Campus.
Campus.
For the campus, whoever has approval for a campus ordinance, um, they should be able to get this lower density zoning. When the township passed the ordinance, there, it read a little differently, it read that whoever has an application submitted. So, I do feel like I was one of the people that did stick up for that way the ordinance was written, at that, the way the master plan was written. Unfortunately, the ordinance that the township passed that we're bound by has not been, um, adopted in such a way as the master plan was written, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sable, you want to say something? Yes.
Around, around the shul, uh, we're gonna have a gate around, on Cross and Massachusetts. Like, I'm afraid cars will park on Cross, and I know you can, then it'd be stupid and dangerous, but at least we try our best, so nobody, around the corner over there, at least. Is it proposed a gate? And, and has a playground area as well?
Cross, two Cross Street?
To Cross and Massachusetts, especially since we're gonna have kids running around there, so you can have a gate around, uh, maybe a white vinyl gate?
He means a, a fence, are you putting a fence around the shul property?
At, at the two corners.
I have no objection to them.
Okay.
Thank you. Ally, I need to do something, are you ready for a vote?
Okay.
Something, hello?
Chairman, again, if there were some questions raised about, um, some question raised about traffic, again, we have Mr. Kennel here, I'm sure he can address any of those questions if you would like them to, if the board is comfortable, we're happy to proceed either way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garfield, yeah?
Yes. Uh, being that I live just about at the corner of Cross and Massachusetts, it was agreed, I don't know if it was written up, but it was agreed a couple of years ago, more than a couple, that the development that you're talking about would not put any exits or entrances facing the development here.
It's a different, I believe Mr. Garfield's talking about a different, a different approval, that's not this application.
No, no, this was just a, I'm not sure it was in writing, but I know it was agreed at some point, that, uh, the development that's going up the campus and everything, uh, would not have an exit or entrance on Cross facing the fairways. I'm just bringing that as a point of information.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do we have that in writing, or a recording?
You'd have to check with the homeowners association.
I'm pretty sure the, 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 the application Mr. Garfield's talking about, is it a different application, is not this, this one has never come before the board for an approval?
I, I, I could not say, I know the, we were notified as, I'm a homeowner here, we were notified quite a while ago that this was an agreement that was made by, uh, Mr., I can't think of his name, doesn't matter, but it was an agreement between the development here and the people in town who were involved in this.
I, I gotta tell you this, I guess.
I don't know whether it is minutes, or, and, you know, what was agreed.
I do recall that, I do recall that development, I thought that was the property that was a couple blocks to the west down Cross Street.
No, we're actually, we, we're right at the corner of Massachusetts and Cross.
Can, can we put this in a part of the resolution or, or approval, that in case we find any writing or agreement, on this particular, on this particular property, we will, we need to come back from the board?
Yes, this, this application had never made any deal, never made any, any application, uh, I'm pretty sure, I don't want to misspeak, I'm pretty sure I know the application that Mr. Garfield's talking about, and it's not this one, but we would agree that if there was an agreement made on this exact application, obviously we have to come back before the board, but I could tell you, it was not this application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, I would ask the, the board for a motion on this application.
Chairman, I emailed.
One second.
Are we getting a traffic study report?
The traffic study was, it was submitted, and, and, and it's a D, you're not gonna have anything, uh, you're just gonna say it works.
But I mean, as promotion, Zion's the question about, is it a D?
It's, it's, it's.
It's a mess, regardless.
Yeah, it, it's, it's gonna be a D.
Just, can I ask Mr. Kennel, is he still on?
Yeah, he's here.
Mr. Jackson, could we just swear in Mr. Kennel? I, 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 I don't like going back and forth, I have no objection to Mr. Kennel being sworn in, I just, he'll answer questions, because swear him in, we're gonna have to reopen to the public now, but I just would like to have Mr. Kennel sworn in to answer the questions.
Okay. Mr. Kennel, do you swear from testimony you'll give before this court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Scott Kennel, A E N N E L, McDonough and Ray Associates, fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan.
Okay, so, yes, I accept. Going to the question, in, in your report you're writing that it's a, it's a level D.
No, 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 that's not my question. It's a level service D that includes the county roadway improvements planned for Cross Street as well as Massachusetts Avenue. So, the analysis took into consideration the county planned improvements, and it's a level of service D at the signalized intersection with or without this development.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Renner.
Mr. Kennel, would you agree, though, that by the way, the applicant, this applicant had designed it by not doing just cul-de-sacs, and having future, starting to pave the roads so that future potential grids can be opened up, would you give us a better plan than just doing a cul-de-sac road?
Ultimately, the, this area town will be better served with the roadways that are being proposed. My analysis did not take any credit for that, it took into consideration all traffic going to Cross Street or Massachusetts Avenue, did not take any credits or consideration for internal trips or for advantages of the other roadway network that will ultimately be built out. And just to one point, we show that portion of Nassau Street will be constructed. When that's continued out to Massachusetts, that provides a more convenient means to get into Keystone, to get to the shul, should a resident decide to drive to the shul. So just again, for the board's benefit, ultimately, when the roadway network's completed, um, there'll be a good roadway network to serve, uh, this community as well as the other communities in the area.
Okay.
Are you saying that Nassau's gonna go out, are you saying Nassau's gonna go out to Massachusetts?
Ultimately, there's, there is a paper street that provides for that, yes, so ultimately, I would expect Nassau, I can't tell you when, but I would, I would imagine that at, at some point in time, that'll be continued and extended out to Massachusetts Avenue.
Would you agree that, uh, cars and, and people living, uh, on Columbus or, and Nostrand, if they have an opportunity to have a, a drive-through to Massachusetts that would eliminate some traffic from Cross Street? If we can do an opening somehow, as Mr. Raisik suggested earlier, for people walking at the, it's twenty-five degrees snow, uh, they live on, on Columbus Avenue, they wanna go to the shul, or they wanna go visit the yeshiva, uh, if they have a car, a drive-through by vehicle, uh, through Keystone, and then end up on Massachusetts, there'll be a tremendous benefit to the traffic on Cross Street and a safer drive.
Well, ultimately, you'll end up with that, with the extension of Nassau, but if you change it now or modify the plan for interconnections, it's gonna change the character of the development as, as Brian Flannery described earlier.
Yeah, he's gonna have to lose the three houses.
In the plans for.
Or, or part of the yeshiva.
In the plans for upgrading, uh, Cross Street, are there gonna be designated left-turning lane onto, to go to Massachusetts?
There are gonna be dedicated left-turn lanes on Cross Street in both eastbound and westbound direction at Massachusetts. There'll also be a center-left turn lane at Nostrand and at Columbus, so that left-turning vehicles will have a refugery to turn into those two streets.
Will the lights be indicated in that way as well, to give designated turning signals to, to the left, you know?
My understanding, there'll, there'll be, uh, lead green arrows at the, um, signalized
I wanna go back to my question, uh, would you agree that if we would have an opening, if we would have an opening to Keystone from Nostrand, this will help a lot with traffic down the road for the whole development, the whole complex? So cars, assuming Nassau will never be developed, because the developer's gonna keep it for, for twenty, twenty, twenty ninety, ninety, twenty-two, twenty-two hundred. We have an opportunity to open, to make an opening on Keystone if we take off one or two houses, I know it's a lot of money, uh, but would that eliminate traffic on Cross Street and help alleviate some congestion over there?
Well, I, I agree, you'll alleviate a small amount of traffic on Cross and Massachusetts, but ultimately, the level of service will remain unchanged. As I indicated, the level service at the signalized intersection will be a level service D with or without this development. So, it's my opinion that it would not have a significant impact on the operational characteristics of Massachusetts and Cross.
So when it gets nine o'clock in the morning, we have two hundred cars trying to go out onto Cross Street, 'cause everybody wants to go to the shul, or work, or carpool, now they have only Cross Street they have to touch, if we give them a way to go on Massachusetts, uh, fifty, sixty cars will choose to go on Massachusetts, that's not a significant change?
Well, I would, based on my experience, at, if it's at nine o'clock, most people are leaving the shul at nine o'clock, so you'd be making a right turn out into Massachusetts, and if you're going back to the residence, you're gonna be making a right turn onto Cross, and then a right turn into Nostrand or Columbus, depending where you reside. So, again, nine o'clock is, is a critical period, but if they're going to shul earlier, traffic volumes are less at that point.
Hey, yeah, I'm. So cars coming from Columbia, make a left, a left, and a left. From somebody living on lot number seven point oh five, I think it's seven, he wants to go to shul by car, because it's raining or he's handicapped, and, and, and it's snowing, he's gonna have to make one, two, three, or four left turns, one in and each other, like a big, a cockerscape, I guess they call it.
And I agree, and then at, at, when they leave the shul, what, periods around nine o'clock, they'll be making all right turns back to their house.
Right, so if we provide them, uh, a, a, a normal drive-through through Keystone, I think it'll be significant, uh, help and, and pedestrian, I know it's money, I know it's less housing, but he does, the applicant does have variance, and we do have a complex of, uh, interesting layout, I think if the applicant can provide that, long run, this will help the township, it will help the residents, and help traffic.
Mr. Sable, if you don't mind, through the chair, if I could just jump in, I'd be honest with you, my biggest malfunction with this whole application is exactly what Mr. Sable's talking about, that there's no connection between Keystone and Nostrand Avenue.
Uh, uh, Mr. Renner, just one second. Ally, could you bring up the plan again, if we're talking about it? Ally, just wait one second, you could explain. Okay, Ellie. Ellie, Ellie's talking. Ellie, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was muted. Um, Ally told me I gotta mute myself every second, I'm not talking. Um, so, my biggest malfunction, I was saying, with this application, is that there is no vehicular, um, connection, there's no street between Keystone Drive and Nostrand Avenue. Yeah, I mean, somehow connecting that, 'cause then that connects it to everything else, and then all people that are further down on Nostrand come out onto Massachusetts Avenue, this will cause, I mean, this will alleviate huge bottlenecks, um, and I, I'm just, I agree, the reason why really I wanted to hear from Mr. Kennel, I really wanted to hear from him, if he could convince me that, why I'm wrong. I heard the, the, the back and forth between Mr. Kennel and Mr. Sable, and so far, I mean, I'm not convinced at all that I'm wrong, other than this is what.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond when Mr. Renner is done?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Sable's indication was that, uh, um, Nassau Street may not be done for a, another ninety years, the applicant would be willing to post a bond to improve Nassau Street out to Massachusetts, that would provide that circulation if it hasn't been done within five years.
Okay, then.
That, that's not the same, I mean, I, I'm just telling you my personal malfunction with this.
But it's the, I, I, and, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Renner, but part of the, uh, uh, design of this with Rabbi Przansky was having that cul-de-sac so that it doesn't provide, uh, the through traffic for the yeshiva part of the application. So, what, what we'd be doing, if we do that, is we're making that into a through street, and, and we're taking away the, the cul-de-sac, which makes both the shul and those houses on the cul-de-sac and the, uh, uh, connection with the yeshiva lot, uh, more intense. The, the traffic circulation, as Mr. Sable indicated, is, is well-improved if, uh, Nassau Street, you can get out to Massachusetts, and this applicant would be willing to post a bond to do that. I, I said five years, whatever the board feels would be the appropriate timeframe if somebody doesn't do it. My personal feeling is that this is one of the last areas to develop in Lakewood, uh, and at some point, and, and I think the major thing that's, uh, inhibiting the development in this area is the extension of the sewer. When this applicant, uh, extends public sewer to the property, which is a benefit to the whole triangle, I think it'll go, but if, if the, uh, board feels that access to Massachusetts is needed, uh, it's my opinion the appropriate place to do that would be Nassau, which is an existing paper street.
Okay, thank you.
And Brian, Brian?
Mr. Sable.
We need both, we need both. That's the truth. We need both, there's a lot of housing, the whole triangle, and this is gonna be at the corner of it, and if we don't provide them here an access and another opportunity, we're never gonna get it. I, I, I know it's money, but this is, it's for the long run, and we need Nassau, we is gonna get anyways, and we need over here for people, uh, living on Nostrand, and, and, and it's just a normal in and out, that's my opinion, I think Mr. Renner is, and agree, and your professional, Mr. Scott Kennel, which usually doesn't side with us, he agrees to us as well, that this will make a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
So what are we doing?
I, I think, let, let Mr. Sable, we'll talk in a second. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kennel, and I would just, yeah, Dave. Dave? Dave? Somebody's muted here.
It's bad. Well, from eight o'clock in the morning until ten-
Dave, Dave, I just un, I just unmuted you. We missed the beginning of what you said.
Oh, okay, I'm saying-
Sorry.
You're talking about people living in this triangle, and you know what's mentioning? The people who live outside of it, that have been here for twenty years or more, the enclave, fairways. And during, oh, I say eight to ten in the morning, we can't go out beside, we can't go out Cross Street. Literally, it is bound up, and Massachusetts is almost as bad. You know, and I just can't see it. There's gotta be, someone has to meet with somebody and uh, a couple of years ago, they took a traffic survey. So we asked them, when did you take it? They told us Saturday. There's no traffic, of course. It's, you know, but you got to uh think of the people living here. We cannot use Cross Street twice a day. And each time, it's two to three hours, we can't get out. We go out the main entrance, we make a right turn, we go to uh Route seventy and go down to Whiteville Road, because we cannot use Cross Street. You know, I'm, I'm not against these homes going up, but somewhere, you gotta get a good traffic uh expert to line this up.
Okay, thank you.
The town is putting in an extra lane, but I don't think that's gonna help except if you're on a bus. Pressure should have been put to make it four lanes.
Eventually, it will be four lanes. Okay. Okay, thank you.
It costs a lot more.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ally, did anybody else come for the public now that we heard Mr. Kennel?
No, I haven't gotten any more emails. I don't know if you wanna unmute anybody.
Okay, I'll mute everybody. Just wanted to make sure for the record that uh-
I'm unmuting Y Gold and phone number ending in O eight and the phone number ending in two six. Do any of you wanna speak on this application?
Okay, so, so just mute them again, please. Okay, uh, I'll close it to the public, and I would ask for a motion, now, let's talk about uh, uh, Mr. Sable. Uh, I think it's up to the board now, whatever we make a motion, if we wanna make a motion with that road, or you want, I could, I could poll, I could poll the board.
I, I just emailed, I just emailed Ally an additional to my previous, maybe we can bring it up. If the whole board agrees to this, I can make a motion on it. If not, we can maybe discuss it. Uh, I think we can close it for the professionals, we can close it to everybody unless you wanna open it back up.
I, I don't, I'm closing it to everybody. It's just the board members right now. We can, so I think the only issue, they basically agree to whatever you said, all the sidewalks, all the roads. The only question is from Keystone to Nostrand, uh, that's, I think, the only question.
Maybe I'm being too harsh, so let, look over the list, and it's up to negotiations, all of us together.
Okay, Ally, could you bring, could you bring up that list, please? Okay, uh-
Whoa!
Don't mind spelling it.
Okay, one second. It's close to the public, it's just now for board members. Let's look through this list. If we agree, we'll make no motion. Sidewalks all over, connecting all together, I think they agree to that. The gate between the yeshiva and no entrance, I, I think they agree to that one.
Wait, wait, go, go back to the first one, with the sidewalks all over. Uh, wh- when, when Mr. Sable was talking, there was talk about putting sidewalk on the far end of, of Nassau. Is that really what you want? Because don't you want the street to be open at some point?
I'm sorry, say that again, where?
The far end, like, when, N- Nostrand Avenue, they're improving Nostrand and Columbus all the way to the end, right?
Correct.
And then they're hitting Nassau. Do you want, do you want sidewalks on the far end of Nassau, on the other side of Nassau? Do you know what I mean?
I see what you mean, the north, the north side of Nassau.
Right, cause e- eventually, they wanna make the road over there.
Right, cause if you wanna continue the road, you don't want sidewalks, but uh-
So, so not, not over the roadway, of course, or wherever it's not gonna be roadway, wherever it's gonna be housing. And if the applicant is required to, only if he's required to buy, in other words, if he's requesting a design waiver for sidewalk, we shouldn't give it. I hear echo, hear echo.
Okay, uh, could, Ally, could we go back to the list?
Makes sense, Mr. Renner?
I guess. Yeah, I mean, I, okay.
Okay, uh, no design waivers for any trees, no design waivers on any sidewalks, hit around tight, show friends cocking, uh, benches all over the open spaces, uh, remove number sixty, again with, remove number sixty point twelve and provide, okay?
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot. Connect Columbus to Nostrand with a concrete and gated pathway. Find open space and no parking signs above. Okay.
I just, for clarification, all the spots where he says gate, he means fence. I know to the board, they all know what that means, you all say gate, but gate to me means the opening, you mean a fence.
Uh, Ally, Ally, how many languages do you speak?
Two and a half, I guess.
She's slowly learning it, slowly but surely.
Now, if there's an open uh space, instead of a bench, can they play football there? Would there be any space like that?
What?
Instead of putting benches all over every, a little open space, is that a type of field where they could play football or something that they could run around, that a bench would get in their way?
I know, football, they, they have a top, have a top lot with equipment.
Right, but we're saying the open space where there isn't equipment, separate from that, for all the-
Uh, uh, i- it's twenty-four hundred square feet. Is twenty-four hundred square foot enough to make uh, to play football? Or rather have uh benches and everybody could sit down and relax?
What, what are teenagers doing there? You don't have a basketball thing. What, what are teenagers doing there?
Okay.
I don't know. And I think the open space where, where the benches, where Mr. uh, the chairman uh suggested uh, uh, across, uh, along Cross Street or by the entrance to Keystone Drive, one of these places. Uh, that's what the chairman had in mind, that's what I, I, I was referencing, referencing.
Yeah, it's, it's a small area, which I think a lot of people could utilize it by, by sitting, uh, relaxing.
Now, if you're gonna put a roadway-
The last item we, I just emailed you again about entrance between Keystone and Nostrand. Mr. Renner, any suggestions?
No, I mean, if they put a road in between Keystone and Nostrand, I don't know if they're gonna be willing to, to go along with that, but if they do, then you would just have to um change one of your, where it says connect Columbus and Nostrand and Keystone with concrete and gated pathway, you wouldn't need that between Nostrand and Keystone.
Correct. I, I agree with that, because we're gonna have a curve and sidewalk normal.
Okay.
And you, I, I, if you're okay, David, I'll make a motion, uh, if, if the board is okay with this, or unless you wanna discuss it further.
One second, I would just poll the board. Uh, Ally, could you have, let me see who's on there. I, I think we agree with everything, and I would just poll the board.
Mr. Hertz, um, excuse me, one minute.
Yes.
I, I just wanna, you know, I, we had a, a storm here, and I got knocked out through the internet for a minute, but I'm back on. I missed a couple of minutes. Was there anything you needed to me, uh, for me?
No, we always need you, don't, don't get me wrong.
But in light of that, we may be about to get pummeled in certain areas, so let's get through this application and then determine what we're doing in case of losing our meeting.
Okay, Ally, could you just bring up who's part of this app, uh, who, which members?
Oh.
Let, let me poll the board, and let's go for a motion on.
We have um, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Sable, Lance Brown, Herzl.
Okay, uh-
Mr. Renner, are you not acting on this?
He is, he is.
He is, he is.
I am.
I don't know why I'm marking it as not.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask one at a time, uh, M- Mr. Garfield, uh, Dave.
Yes.
Mr. Garfield.
What?
Uh, would you want the road, i- if this gets approved, would you want the road connecting from Keystone to Col- uh, to Col- to Columbus? Uh, to, to Nostrand.
Nostrand.
And then out to Massachusetts?
And connecting to, to Columbus, yeah. I'm not saying we're approving it.
Yeah, I, I would say yes, because it wouldn't throw it all onto Cross Street.
Okay, next. Uh, Mr. Renner, you would like to see that road in?
I would like to see the road, but, but more importantly, I think we have to hear from the applicant's professionals, could they put the road in? And then had as a look, and, and our professionals should review the road. I mean, we're putting in a road, it's not with sidewalks and everything, like, it has to be, I don't think we could just do this on the fly, uh, my personal opinion.
I agree.
So they'll, they'll come back during resolution compliance, uh, and with the proposal in front of the board, two options, and we'll make a decision.
And we're allowed to say no at that time if we don't like any of the options?
Sorry, can I make a suggestion?
Yep. Mr. Renner, Mr. Chairman, if I can make a suggestion, assuming the board approves, it sounds like, again, they want to see the road from Nostrand to Keystone. Um, should the board vote uh in favor of approving that, uh, what I would, what I would agree to is that we would uh design that and bring it prior to resolu- prior to acting on the resolution. Um, so that, I know we've done that once or twice before on previous applications, so you could see the, see the design, you could see that the sidewalks are in, you could see that the, the proper roadways are there, the RSI is compliant. Um, this way, we, we're not going back and forth. We know what the board has voted on and decided, and we would just come back and show you that plan, and you either act or you don't act on the resolution.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with it, so uh-
And, and I, the idea- Sorry.
I, I'm ready for a motion.
Yeah, could you wait one second, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Application here, hold on one second.
Mr. Renner wants to say.
Could we, uh, I just, just wanted to bring my thought out, that I'm okay if you'd close up where the current access is to Massachusetts Avenue in that cul-de-sac and put a road straight from that hits, from Nostrand hits Keystone on top, and then comes out, like, I don't, I don't wanna redesign your whole plan, I'm, I don't know what I'm doing, right, like that? If that works better, like, okay?
You're saying close up, and you, I just wanna clarify, you're saying close up, you're saying close up?
I'm not saying, I'm saying, if, if it works better for you to move down the houses along, I, I'm not looking, yeah, whatever works better, I, I don't know.
You know, Mr. Renner, technically, he may not lose a house then, he could put that duplex over there.
Again, if the board approves it, uh, we will look at that, prior, we'll come back before we, before you act on, on uh, on the resolution.
Okay, so I, is, any board members will, uh, ready to make a motion?
Yes, time table will make a motion as presented with all the uh steps that I uh included in the email, and the board agreed.
Okay, do we have a second to it? We have a second.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Meyer, is that you? Or Hector?
Fuentes, yes.
Oh, okay, Mr. Fuentes, uh, seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
I abstain.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Fensbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Renner.
I'm, I'm muted, yes.
Oh, there you go, thank you. Mr. Isaacson.
No.
Mr. Meyer. Yes, I heard a yes, thank you.
Yeah, I also heard.
Mr. Raitzick.
Is, is this counting a road going through or not?
Yes.
It is counting a road going through, then yes.
Mr. Fuentes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, motion approved, thank you very much.
Chairman, thank you again, and thank you, the applicant. A question, how, how are we gonna work out the design now? Are we gonna come back in front of the board with two, three options, or what?
If I can, if I can address that, Mr. Chairman, what we would do, uh, the engineers and, and the applicant will work. They will put a plan together showing the comments, uh, we will submit it to Ally and we'll distribute it to the board. Um, in conjunction with that, John's office, I will work with on a resolution. Um, so assuming that everything is approved, we'll do that, we'll send to the board, we will review it.
And Adam, send it to Terry that he can review it and uh make sure that we agree to what's the best option for this, before you come back to the board to us.
And no additional uh houses more than we already have listed?
No, the, 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 that's a new application. You cannot add, you can't add to it. Okay, thank you. Um, Ally, I don't think, I know we're talking, we should listen to the number four. Hey, we have a half an hour left.
I'm, I'm signing off, good night.
I, I would recommend, good night, I would recommend we do the two correspondents, we're, we're gonna have to carry Hater Benetoura.
I, I agree with you.
We're not gonna finish it in half an hour.
Gonna finish it, and, and uh, Mr. Hirsch can't even represent properly.
Correct.
I, I feel that uh, Mr. Shay was waiting, but uh, when, when are we carrying it to, and if you can make, please, the announcement?
Um, I, I would recommend August seventeenth. Um, we could put it on August third, but we do have two other um, uh, uh, applications with objectors on August third already, so August seventeenth would be better.
Okay.
Uh- The announcement, announcement.
Can we put?
Number three on tonight's calendar, SP twenty-three fifty-seven A, Cheder Benetoura, has been earned.
Right.
And will be heard on, what was it, August third, Ally?
August seventeen.
August seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. That will be a live uh meeting. So if you got the notice to participate virtually, um, that meeting will be held at uh, the, the Public Meeting Hall in Lakewood at Town Hall at six o'clock in person.
I, I'm not sure if that date works, so we, do you need me for the quorum on that?
What do you? Hopefully, we'll have a quorum without you, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I will have to check, I don't remember.
Chairman, about the notice, if I could, uh, will renotice be required, John, or, or?
Yeah, Mr. Shay, could you speak up a little? I'm having a hard time hearing you. I think everyone probably-
Put my speaker up here. Uh, question about the notice, uh, whether or not renotice is gonna be required since we're gonna be in person, or whether we flow with uh the current-
Well, my, it, in my opinion, as the board's attorney, um, if we make the announcement now, if you're hearing in the virtual format, then um, you would have noticed to go back on August seventeenth, and you were just advised that it's in public. I think if you were cautious, though, you might wanna renotice. Also, you take out of the equation all the uh, you know, the, the virtual notice uh issues, which, which I've seen some people raise, but that's up to you. I mean, my advice to the board is that notice is satisfactory in this manner. Um, but, you know, that, that's up to you, how cautious you wanna be.
Yeah, I'll discuss that with my client, thank you.
Okay, and then, Mr. Shay, uh, please use the time right now, so we should have an agreement with Mr. Hirsch. I mean, you, you have all the, what, what was submitted, hopefully, we can come to an agreement.
Yeah, well, he, uh, he has the submission at this point in time, as, as well as Mr. Dean, so I'm sure we'll be discussing the matter in the next week or two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to correspondence.
All right, sorry about that. This is correspondent, correspondence item SP twenty-three oh six. It's a removal of previously approved fencing from an approval of sixteen fifty Massachusetts Ave LLC. Um, this is the letter, I'm actually just looking to find the plan for you. And there it is. This is the one, at our last meeting, I had incorrectly summarized Miriam's correspondence request. This is the one I was referring to at that time. Uh, I believe Mr. Pfeffers here on this application. The board had approved this school with a fence here. However, this property owner now owns the lot next door, and he doesn't want the fence between his two properties anymore.
Turned behalf of the applicant, as Ally indicated, it's now under common ownership, and we're just looking that there's-
You consolidating the lots?
No, the two separate buildings are separate lots, um, and the applicant just re-
And he doesn't want it.
And, and the reason we put the fence up to begin with was because we didn't own the other property. Um, but now that the two properties are owned um, under the same control, uh, they're now just seeking to remove that fence. Uh, that, that's a simple analogy, as you see the picture, and that is it. That's my engineering testimony, by the way.
Okay.
Well, uh, what, what is the, what is the project, and what's next door?
There's a school on each, uh, on, approved, uh, there's a school on each property.
And the whole school is fenced in from outside, around the exterior?
Well, again, we're asking to remove that, that squiggly line that, where, where Ally just zoomed in. We're looking to remove that um, that fence portion.
And the next property is a school? Okay, any board members?
I have approval for time table, I didn't leave yet. Time table, I didn't leave yet, uh, so I'm gonna go to the next application. Um, I think the next lot has an approval for a school, I don't think there's anything built yet there, but it's.
The other one, uh, just, just to be clear, I think the other property to, well, called the north, was a, a change of use from a, I think it was a, a house to a school, uh, and there's a park. So, so yes, if you drive past it, you would see a, well, it looks like a house, but it's, it's a school.
Correct. Okay, there, any board members have any questions? Okay, Ali, do we have to open it to the public, do we have anybody in the public on this application?
Uh, notice was provided, but I haven't gotten any emails.
Okay, it's, uh, open and close it to the public, and I would ask for a motion on this correspondence. Move.
Time table will make a motion to approve.
Time table, move.
Somebody's asking a question, is that Ellie?
Uh, I think Ellie said move.
About variances.
It was, I just wanted to know if any new variances are being created.
I believe the reason they're here is because that fence is provided to, um, ameliorate the buffer relief that was required, they are no longer providing that fence. So I don't know if it's a variance or a waiver, but there was a requirement for a buffer.
Okay, and, and did we, um, double check to make sure that?
Unless they can, I'm sorry to interrupt, who's speaking?
Ellie's speaking.
Ellie, I'm sorry, Ellie. That, it, it would still, unless the, the, uh, lots were, uh, combined ownership, it would still require a variance because there's still two different lots.
Which is what we know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Renner.
Now, did we, did our engineering department also confirm that they're on the common ownership? I just wanted to hear that.
No, I don't know that we have access to ownership records.
I could provide, I could provide, uh, prior to, or if, if it was a condition, I could provide a, a certification that two properties are under, are under common control. There are two different LLCs, each them by the same severance, and I could provide that certification to John.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second by Justin.
Just a second, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sable left, Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Uh, yes, but I think Mr. Sable made the motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Sable, you did come back. Mr. Sable.
He's muted.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Herzl, you said yes, Mr. Renner. Mr. Isaacson called me, he left. Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ratzek.
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes. Thank you.
Okay, next correspondence.
Uh, this is SD twenty-three fifty-four. Made by Sylvester Drive Holdings, it's a request to add a retaining wall within five feet of the property line. What I have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Marion Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Sylvester Drive Holdings LLC. Just on this one, the subdivision map has been filed already. Um, all that we're requesting here is that the drainage has been redone. So we're asking firstly to remove the requirement for an HOA since it's no longer gonna be necessary. We've also added retaining walls, they're actually about two feet from the property lines. Um, nothing else is changing, I do have Brian Flannery with me here on this application and would ask to have him sworn.
Okay, Brian. Mr. Jackson, do you swear a man?
Do you swear a firm testimony will give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Miriam indicated, this is a subdivision where there were nine, uh, single-family lots created uh, in, uh, all larger size lots. Uh, uh, in addition, it was a tenth lot that had to do with some, uh, property adjustments. But basically, we're here, the applicant was going through resolution compliance, and since it's a little different than it was in resolution compliance, uh, the township engineer thought it was best to submit this as correspondence to the board to advise the board and any neighbors who might be interested on, on what's going on. Uh, what they're doing is providing a retaining wall around the, uh, outside perimeter of the property so that the rear yards can be graded and flatter. Uh, what they'll be doing is filling in that area, and, and there'll be a retaining wall that goes from uh, a foot or two up to, uh, six and a half feet at the highest. Uh, it, it'll be a, a regular block retaining wall with all the geo grid, it'll be behind it. These are the kind of walls that last forever. Uh, and again, the, the drainage has been changed, there, there's two, uh, uh, recharge areas provided to pick up the drainage, all in compliance with the, uh, residential, uh, the stormwater management rules. Uh, but the town engineer wanted, uh, the board and neighbors to have an opportunity to see that it, it's different than what was shown on the original plans.
And notice was provided to the neighbors?
Yes, notice was provided to the neighbors.
Okay, Ty, Terry wanted to say something, Terry.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of questions, um. Who is going to maintain the retaining walls, uh, and how will that be accomplished?
The, each of the property owners.
One at a time, please.
Uh, the, each of the property owners will maintain the retaining wall on their own property.
And you'll provide the engineering department with the mechanism as to how that's gonna be done?
Yes, yes, and, and also structural calculations will be provided, all, all the, all, all the requirements for retaining walls in accordance with normal engineering standards will be provided.
All right, uh, question number two, uh, I heard Miriam testify earlier that, uh, the HOA that was originally proposed is gonna be eliminated. What was the HOA going to accomplish and how, how will the maintenance responsibilities, um, that would have been done through the HOA be now accomplished?
Well, the, the drainage has been changed with the, uh, regrading of the lots, there's two areas that are indicated on the plan at the low points, uh, in the rear yards where drainage facilities are, the prior drainage had pipes that crossed property lines, so it made it difficult to assign responsibility. Now the responsibility will be assigned to the two property owners who have the, uh, stormwater management, uh, facilities on their lot, and they'll be responsible for maintaining them.
All right, so similar to the retaining walls, you'll give the engineering department, uh, the, the legal mechanisms as to how that'll be done. Uh, and equally important, there'll be stormwater maintenance plans for, uh, each of those facilities on each of those properties.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from any board members? Ali, we will open to the public, is anybody from the public who would like to be heard on this?
Um, I did not receive any emails, but I'll unmute Yated and Y Gold if they are here to speak on these applications.
Now get to Mr. Gold.
I have a question on this.
Uh, uh, Jakey, okay, go ahead. Uh, if anybody's on the, for the public would like to be heard, please wait a second. Mr. Meyer, please go ahead.
I don't know if I, I, I missed it or not, but, uh, if it's, they're not having an HOA and it's a one continuous, uh, retaining wall, how is, how are homeowners supposed to each maintain the retaining wall? Let's say a person's section starts crumbling, why should it be the homeowner's responsibility to fix the retaining wall that he didn't, he didn't put in?
The homeowners are all part of a group that's, these are, uh, it, it's not a developer that's doing this, it's a group of end users that got together to do this. So they're all the end users and they're all aware of it, and they're all accepting the responsibilities in accordance with the documents that will be submitted and approved by the engineer's office.
Yeah, but Mr. Meyer makes a good point, what happens when they don't get along with each other?
Uh, it's a block wall, so it's, your, your wall and my wall would be different.
No, they wouldn't.
Some of my wall, your wall.
It's not, it's not a continuous wall?
It, it's, it's a, a block wall, so there will be a couple of blocks that go over and, and they would have to, as neighbors, if you had a fence on your property line and, and your fence fell down, one of the neighbors would have to talk to the other neighbor, and the worst case is that you, you replace a couple extra blocks, but this is gonna be.
Brian, that, that's different though, a fence, you could put a fence on your own property and, and cover the neighbor's fence if you don't get along. Um, just because, but, you know, Mr. Meyer makes a good point, what, why are you putting the retaining wall in? What does it, what does it do?
It, it, it makes it so that the rear yards are more usable. It's a very steep slope that's gonna be seen on the plans. Uh, and by putting the retaining walls in, all of these, uh, uh, owners who are, uh, part of this application get usable rear yards.
So if, if one guy, if one owner does not maintain the wall in, in ten, twenty years or there's something happens and it collapses, then the whole, everybody's backyard is gonna be undermined?
Everybody's backyard doesn't undermine, these, these are, uh, the block walls that are built with, uh, geo grid behind them, and the geo grid, uh, is, is relative to the size of the wall. The highest wall is six and a half feet, and then it tapers off, a six and a half foot wall is not, is not really, and there'll be engineered walls with, uh, details of them and maintenance responsibilities provided to the township engineer, and each of the owners will have to agree to those.
Let's say somebody sells their house, if you don't have an HOA in place for something like this, how is, if somebody sells his house in fifteen years from now, and then five years later he has to come and replace a retaining wall that he has no, no idea about? Without HOA, uh, what is he doing?
Well, the, uh, if, if he has an HOA, that creates another set of problems, and, and now he's joining an HOA that he doesn't know about. When, when, when a person bought, person buys a lot, there's disclosure that's required and the disclosure would be stipulated to the engineer and approved by the engineer's office.
It's like a disaster, but.
Are they gonna be filling in with the dirt on top of, behind the wall to make it level? Is that the point?
Yes, that's the point, yes.
Why do you care to have a HOA, what, what's the detriment to a HOA?
The, these are owners that are doing it, and they say they would prefer to not have an HOA, they'd prefer to all be responsible for their own, and, and I could understand that because if I was in this situation, that's what I'd want to be, and the worst case, I'm assuming, is I gotta replace a couple blocks of my neighbor if he doesn't do it. Not a big deal to a, to associate.
I have a question for Terry, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, Mrs. Jackson.
Um, Mr. Vog, i- is it possible to, to build a retaining wall with, uh, returns along each property line so that each retaining wall is structurally independent of each other on your property line? Can it be constructed in that manner? I'm, I'm going to assume the answer is yes, John, I'm not a structural engineer, I have not looked at this design, my gut reaction is yes, you probably could have independent walls that, that basically you put each other?
It's probably a lot more cost effective.
So, Mr. Flannery, can you agree to that?
The, the applicant would have, would be agreeable to having, uh, structurally independent walls a- along each of the property lines.
Okay, thank you.
Did they say that walls are already in place partially? Is the wall already partially in place?
No, it's not.
Okay, uh, Ali, is there anybody for the public?
No, I don't believe so.
Who's Mr. Gold and, uh, Mr. Yaga, you said? Are they still on?
I think Mr. Gold remuted himself and Yada hasn't responded. They're unmuted now, if anyone is here to speak on this, no, they're remuting themselves.
Okay, so I will close it to the public and I would ask for a motion on this correspondence. Anybody would make a motion?
This is Justin, I'll give a motion, um, to, to approve the change, um, based on the, uh, constructing independently, uh.
Constructed walls?
Yeah. Yeah, constructed, uh, retaining walls, yeah.
Okay, thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Second, roll call please.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roll Call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson left, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Ratzek.
Yes.
And I saw Mr. Fuentes signed off, he may have lost power. But that's enough for a quorum, thank you.
Approval of minutes, we have June twenty. We have the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth.
Yes.
Okay, most moved, we have a second, second, favor.
You feel, when we get back in person, we expect sushi for our, for our first meeting, right?
Okay. Uh, approval of bills?
No bills tonight.
Oh, you're getting paid? Okay, uh, looking forward to July twentieth meeting, hopefully everybody could attend. I know, Ali, you said you can't attend.
I won't be there.
Okay, we'll miss you at that meeting, but looking forward for everybody else to come. As one happy family again. In, in town square.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, one of the, one of the, one of the advantages of the virtual meetings is that we can Google stuff, we can look at maps online, and we can email Ali. Is that appropriate to bring a laptop at the, uh, live meeting and use?
There is actually case law, may I respond, Mr. Hirsch?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that, but, um, board members can use their own knowledge, and there's a limited amount you can research things, I think looking at Google Earth is pretty common. Um, but you have to put on the record what you've looked at and give the, uh, other participants an opportunity to, to know and to, and to accept it or not.
Mrs. Jackson, we had. Uh, Mr. Sable also, be- before we went, uh, virtual, Ali used to have that, the camera, the, we used to see everything, uh, Google Earth, she brought all.
Yes, and, and well, and now that my laptop is set up to, um, access my Lakewood files, um, remotely, I should be able to do that from the courtroom when I'm there, yes.
I, I've had cases that I've been involved in where board members have looked up types of trees and how high they grow, you know, things like that, and, and I have it on good authority that there are some Lakewood planning board members who have iPhones and, and take them to meetings and sometimes look things up, so I, I wouldn't be shocked if that kind of thing's going on. You know, all, all kidding aside, the, uh, you, you can look things up to a point and, and, uh, just put on the record what you're relying on and what you're checking out, and, and share it, and it, it should be okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I was looking forward to see everybody July twentieth. Everybody have a good night and thank you, and thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.